Like to call to order the meeting for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, the last official meeting of two thousand and twenty-two. Hooray is three P M. Planning Commission decisions. There weren't any, there's nothing for any of you to call up to ruin the start of next year.
I had a plan to.
They didn't do anything. I'm not sure what we're paying them for. Uh, material management fee ordinance.
Burley.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. This is the second reading of the material management fee, which is designed to recover costs for the shared commercial enclosures. We did have staff present at the Restaurant Association last week, and we did send a notice out. So we've had some questions and some feedback. But there has been no changes to the ordinance itself at this time.
Anybody complain about the fee?
Feel.
I was gonna say, how'd that go with the association meeting? Sorry, I wasn't.
It was actually fine.
They just really are looking for a couple of things to address composting. And to their credit, they see that as a huge priority that the town needs to help figure out a model moving forward. And we told them that we are committed to. We don't know what it looks like, but we're committed to trying to figure that out. They never had any issues with the other stuff.
That's awesome.
But can't tell you they really understand what the other stuff is.
Had one small office opt out. Uh, we had some questions from a yoga studio and um, we've had uh, somebody contacted Jeffrey. Who is a retailer about it.
Exactly. FYI. What was the complaint?
Uh, forty-eight dollars a month.
Too much.
Too much, yeah.
Look at expensive. Well, the restaurants didn't have a problem with fee.
But I'd be fifteen dollars for a drink last night. So everything's expensive.
Everything's expensive.
That's up.
Oh, huh?
Yeah.
I thought, I thought Tenel was paying. That was your first mistake. Uh, any other questions on this? All right, we're on for second reading. Jesse, thank you. Uh, Breckenridge Events Committee Ordinance Amendment, also second reading.
Uh, Mayor Council, um, this has had no changes since first reading. Um, there was a question on first reading about. Membership and we did confirm that the at-large members are within the jurisdiction. So unless you have any questions, I think this is, uh, we recommend that you move this forward on second reading.
Questions? All right. A five R architectural materials amendments for first reading.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council. Um, so this is the first reading of policy five amendments, updating the architectural materials. Policies. We took your comments last time to heart during the work session and we made changes to policy five A, which would update the absolute policy. Not allowing any buildings above seventy-five percent of any facade to use metal, brick. Or stucco above seventy-five percent and on any facade. And then we've added the materials matrix, which was basically, it's basically the same as was presented during the work session. To policy five R, the relative policy. Any questions about what we've proposed?
Anyone?
I had a question. Nothing that. This is on page three of the uh, of the ordinance. And I don't think it's anything that's changed, but in rereading it on line twenty-five of page three, uh, has to do with the solar. Solar devices and that there's like, you know, five, one, the preferences are rated one through five. And the highest preference is to be selected and just how that. For Jeffrey, how that dovetails with the efficiency of the solar panels in each of those positions. So if the highest. Preference is to be on the backside of the building and it can be located there. But the efficiency of the solar there is only twenty percent where if it's located on. The, the next lowest preference, which would be on the garage. And that efficiency was eighty percent for the solar. Is that, is there flexibility in the code for a planner to be able to um. See that, that benefit and not adhere to the letter of the, the law, I guess, of the code?
Yeah, there is some flexibility. I think, you know, where we really start getting a little bit more rigid is probably within the, you know, conservation district where we're looking at. Kind of balancing the look, but when we're further out in other neighborhoods. Generally, the, the panels are going to be cited probably where there is the greatest efficiency. You know, we have that preference if there could be, let's say, all things being equal, if, if um, a facade was in the back and they could produce as much if they're not loading the whole roof of solar. Um, we prefer that, but we kind of just have that stated in, in terms of order of operation and where we'd like it, since it is a policy that regulates aesthetics. But we are understanding that, you know, the, if the north elevation is the one that's away from the street, that that probably isn't a real practical. Solution to load that, that roof plane up with, with panels.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
All right. Thank you.
That is first reading. Uh, we have policy twenty-four amendments, housing also first reading. Hi, Lori.
Good afternoon. Um, because this is first reading of an ordinance that will um. Modify policy twenty-four in the development code, basically um. Language in the development code that is also one of the housing rules and regs. So it's duplicative to have it in both places and causes some issues. So um, wanted to present that to you. There's one minor. Change of substance. Um, in the development code, it required a four-month minimum lease for employee housing. But all of our other housing is three-month minimum. So um, we're recommending sticking with the three-month and putting it all in the housing rules.
So I don't, why are, why are we doing three months?
I mean, I. We do see some seasonal leases. We just want that option. It doesn't happen a lot, but there are occasions where we have an employee that's only going to be there for a season and three months. It's, that's.
Season is longer than three months. That's.
Many January, February, March.
It was back when a season was three months.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we, we could extend and require the minimum term of lease be four months, but it never has seemed to be an issue with a lot of turnover. Too many rentals anyway of that duration. And it's, we're just now actually starting to get a process where we approve all these rentals in dispersed units. So if it does turn out that we're seeing a lot of turnover, I would be surprised if it does, but we can bring that to your attention. But right now, most of the leases are all six months.
I just thought that was weird.
Yeah. Extended conversation about that, as I recall, many, well, that was what.
Many months ago.
Yeah, it was a long time ago. And uh, I don't remember why we came to the.
It's been three months for quite a while. Um, just at our standard, um, that matches, aligns with the county. Really doesn't ever come up as an issue where it seems like there's a lot of turnover that's inappropriate. But we'll know more as we are now monitoring all the rentals.
Any other questions?
Lori, on the employee generation, you know, that study we did, have we commissioned that yet?
Um, we are in the process of inking the contract. Um, we did end up selecting EPS. They did the study for Vail and you might recall our numbers are based on the Vail numbers. So they're very familiar with them.
Did our S T R nexus.
Yep. We'll be talking to them because we're also doing that updated needs assessment. They're going to be um, surveying employers as well around the same time. So we want EPS to work with Root to coordinate those surveys that are gonna go out to employers about the same time.
That's awesome. Thanks.
All good. All right. Lori, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, two thousand and twenty-two budget appropriations. Hey, Dave. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. How are y'all doing? Good. Thank you. That's right. We are probably a couple months before this has been done in the past. Based on the advice of our auditor, we need to go through each fund and. Look at the year-to-date, project out December and see if there's any spend over the budget. Okay? So we went through all the funds. We went through this when we did the twenty-three budget. We went through and did another look and. A few funds are projecting to be over the budget. So that's what this memo really is about. And the reason why we're doing it now is it needs to be approved within the calendar year of the town, not afterwards. So that's why we're doing it this month. Um, the first one is the general fund. The Washington Lot Purchase, we split fifty-fifty between the general fund and the housing fund. So that purchase was not in the budget. Macadoo. Cemetery Fund, even though it's a small amount, we did have some outside contractor service for tree maintenance, which was above the spin for the budget for two thousand and twenty-two. And parking and transportation. Parking and transportation. The parking structure, which is the condo and the management fee part of that was not in the original budget for twenty-two, so we're adding that in. By the way, we're not putting revenue in this, so there is, some of these would have offsetting revenue, but this is just focused on expense. Um, and then the reusable bag as well uh, was, was outside of the budget fee of a hundred and seven thousand. Uh, sustainability, that was in another fund. But as far as in the parking and transportation fund, that's where it's hitting now. So that's why that's listed. Uh, our healthcare plan, um, we looked at our year-to-date spend. We looked at historical November and December invoices. And projecting that out, we're going to be over budget for healthcare benefits cost. So that is what, it's a, it's a projection. It's hard to say, but usually those are the two biggest months of spend. And then um, the Accommodation Units Compliance Fund. Which some of that was in another fund when the budget was done, but not all of it. So we did create Fund Twenty for the budget for two thousand and twenty-two and now have those dollars hitting. So that three point eight million is the spend. Once again, there's revenue coming in, but this is just expense. If you look at where some of the other funds had spending in two thousand and twenty-two, outside of what were they uh, were originally budgeted, our net new expense is five point seven. So that's really what the, the total appropriation is seven point six million to be approved, but the net to the town is five seven. And I did glance at total spend for the town. At all the funds added up, um, when we did our budget projection, we were about five point seven million under for twenty-two. So somehow this puts us even. Don't ask me how, but it will.
Even better.
Right the ship. And I'll remind you that, you know, and this is a little different way we're approaching this, which is great. I mean, I, we really. We enjoy working with this new auditor firm. They're well-respected. They're, you know, they're, uh, do uh. Other municipalities, uh, well-known municipalities and have a good reputation. And so. You know, he prefers that when he's signing off on these financial statements that these kind of things happen uh, in the calendar year when that, that does it. So as we go forward. On this, you know, when we make, just like tonight, I expect that, you know, I, I put the memo in there, we're going to be looking at the phase two Milne. And approving that now all of a sudden that'll be a half million dollar appropriation and not in the twenty-three budget. When those kind of decisions are made, uh, what Dave's gonna do is bring the resolution back at the next meeting.
So we'll be back in January for twenty-three.
And those things happen when you're making those decisions, we're gonna adopt those things and change the budget. That way they have the ability to input those numbers in. Right?
Yes.
And do whatever they do on their end and not waiting and trying to clean up. Cause you met, there was lots of little things you did all throughout twenty-two, but they, because we had so much other savings, we absorbed all those things. And so this is just the ones they feel like. And I will point out too, on the healthcare that. We're putting, while we're putting this extra million in there, that still allows us to have a fund balance that we wanna, we would kind of want to keep a million dollar cushion in there. On the fund balance going into twenty-three.
So in the healthcare is gonna save us money in the cemetery fund.
Could be, yeah.
Right?
Hope so.
We get out of it cheaply with only forty-five hundred, so.
Couple of other quick updates on the audit with, that should be here this week. I think tomorrow, our final audit for two thousand and twenty-one. So that's good. And then on S T Rs, I just got a quick update from Bella. We've got five thousand, five million out of seven point four collected and on licenses, about three thousand out of forty-three hundred at bay so far.
What's the, how long do they have to pay?
End of the month.
Okay.
Some will wait till the end.
What did you say, three thousand out of forty-three hundred?
A bag of nickels in too.
We got a coin counter up there.
That's right.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you, Dave. All right, Social Equity Advisory Commission.
So this is just a cleanup. Um, Kirsten and I were reviewing the prior resolutions and. Are recommending some simplification to the existing. Legislation. Um, I've bulleted out what those changes are and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Good. All right. Easy crew today so far. It's early. Oh, it's early. Projects update.
Oh, today, but I can take any questions.
What are they gonna have questions?
Can we talk about the cemetery fund? I mean.
Yeah, it doesn't stop.
Outside edge? I don't know. We think Jeffrey might have been right last time, so we're gonna make some edits.
Write that one down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know.
I wish that person that screamed at me could hear you say that.
Oh.
Dam? Is the concrete done?
For this year, yeah.
Good.
Gonna be moving out around Christmas, taking a little break and coming back in February.
Sweet.
So we got the spillway all poured out, which is great. We're just missing a little bit of one of the right walls, but it's not a problem. So we could operate the dam if needed over the spillway.
This has been a kind of a snowy and particularly cold winter. Did that, did that do anything with that timeline?
This winter?
Yeah, this is like what we've had so far has been kind of.
It won't, it won't affect what we're scheduled for next year.
Shannon, what are you looking forward to this spring? What are we looking forward to this spring? What's on your radar of things that obviously last year of the dam?
Can't wait to come back and talk about pedestrian flow.
We don't have a roundabout journey under passes or culverts or anything?
No, we have a big overlay program coming in. We are hoping to do some work on Broken Lands in Warriors Mark, which would be impactful for residents over there. Have some sidewalk we're adding. We're gonna enter into design projects and planning projects like the River Walk.
Some issues in Warriors Mark we're looking at. Remember that your big project, one of the bigger ones was the pool renovation. And Scott's gonna be bringing you back an update on that probably in January. And so that's one of the big capital things that you had.
Putting together a schedule for you, probably first or second meeting in January. But yeah, it won't be a heavy construction year like it was this year.
Been a nice break.
Good. We're gonna lower the. Plus you want to do, you want to throw some stuff at it right now? You got a roundabout in mind? Yeah, up in the Highlands.
Another dam.
The dam.
Yeah, we're gonna fix up Scott Reed's uh, warm tub. It's not a hot tub anymore. Because of, you know.
Warm.
So yeah, so we're gonna have to child care after that.
All right.
Thank you, Shannon. Mobility. See, it needs to be hot. This way we don't have to keep painting.
Wait, that's the last one. Let's let him free.
Like a month to recover.
Hi, Matt. Afternoon again, Mayor and Council. Does anybody else have chocolate on their hands?
I had some on my pants.
Yeah, I did too. Perfect. Um, thank you all for supporting us today on the free ride day. Uh, it was pretty good success. I think overall this morning was really awesome. There's a lot of donuts that we got out in two hours. So thank you for the support on that. Um, a couple of updates uh, to your packet. Couple of questions from, I think, a couple of you this morning. Uh, the Silver or Upper Warriors Mark Shuttle has been running. Uh, it started November twenty-third. Ridership has been pretty good, so. Um, just wanted to let you know that in case you were curious. Alta Verde, the green route, we are going to begin that next Friday, the twenty-third, so right before Christmas. We have a few people moving in there. So we want to make sure we're supporting that. So uh, next Friday, December twenty-third, we'll be running that all day, every day. Um, last on the free ride, we have uh, New Year's Eve service. So we are going to try to offer um, New Year's Eve service until two A M. We're gonna look into the idea of security, but we weren't successful in that last year. So. We're okay and comfortable with the idea of running the service without security, knowing that we have proper support. So um, just so you know, that's the plan and we're gonna try to move forward with that, so.
You have a, those, those drivers have been trained what to do when they encounter a belligerent drunk?
Correct. They, they have been trained and obviously we hope that they do the right thing, so.
We're gonna, we're gonna publicize that so people will know enough to leave their cars at home.
We will get it out there as soon as I'm a hundred percent sure that we can offer the service, which we believe it's a pretty easy shift in our schedule. Um, we will get that going. Let's see, last thing, uh, the Snowstang kickoff event that is on your packet for December seventeenth, which is Saturday. Is now moving to December eighteenth, so Sunday, so this coming Sunday. Same timeframe. Um, they just asked us late last night if we could adjust it um, for a couple of VIPs from.
Yeah. Sure, Sean Alu, the C dot executive director will be, wants to be here for it.
Dan Gibbs.
Do you like us out there?
Uh, we found out that the bus is going to arrive now by eight A M. So we're gonna try to do seven forty-five, ready to go. Um, so anytime right around eight o'clock would be great.
What date is that against the center? Date again?
Sunday. Yep.
That's at the Transit Center, Matt?
Yeah, yes, it's right at the Transit Center. We'll pull the bus right in there and then. Uh, it'll hang out there for about two hours and then we're gonna put it away for the day. So should be a cool little event. Um. We, we may have a regular busting bus up here that day, not the snowstang bus that uh, is, is working on being wrapped. So just an FYI in that. Beyond that, uh, sustainability or sustain immobility wise, the mayor's challenge, uh, we've had a few submissions, ten to fifteen so far. It's only been going for twenty-four hours, so.
Sweet.
Yep, so I think we're getting some submissions on that and, you know, we have good ridership on the buses, so. Um, that is all I have.
Looked my two hundred bucks, yeah?
For putting today together.
Yeah, that was awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was good.
Everybody has a sugar rush for sure. Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, thanks a lot. So was that it for sustainability or is there more? Okay. Uh, housing and childcare.
Well, good afternoon again. Um, we had a housing committee meeting today and so those minutes will be in your packet at your next meeting. We'll be doing sort of a year-end report relative to the blueprint um, in January, so you'll see that as well. There were some minutes in your packets. I don't know if anybody had any questions on the minutes that were in your packet from the previous meeting. Um, that was focused a lot on Stilson and I think we're gonna be talking about Stilson later today, so probably not, but. Um, update on Alta Verde. Um, yeah, people are living there. We had um, three people occupying the buildings over the weekend and additional move-ins this week, five move-ins this week. They have nineteen that are in process. Um, so gradually seeing that you, that property occupied and the goal is ninety percent occupancy mid-January. So that's the goal. The lodge wayside, those are also occupied, seem to be going well. Um, there's a few vacancies there, but thirteen out of the eighteen are occupied and serving primarily transit, so. That's good as well. But yeah, thirteen of our eighteen, yeah. But that's all I had unless you guys have some questions.
Couple of questions with uh, here on Landing in Pinewood Two, is there, what's typical turnover on an annual basis? Are people staying in those units or?
Here on Landing, we have very little turnover. Um. It, you know, we did the um, review of the apartment budgets and um. The occupancy at that last housing committee meeting and I think here on Landing was. You know, since we've had it um, four, five years or so, very little turnover, maybe four or five a year at the most. Pinewood Two was interesting. I think um, Quorum saw more turnover initially when it first opened in the first year and a half, but then it's stabilized and they see very little turnover there too, so.
Do we have a?
When there is turnover, there's a long, long waitlist. It, it's great in some ways, but you know, the waitlist never gets sort of pared down.
On the lodge, do we have an onsite manager? Is that, wasn't that the plan?
Um, the county was gonna put a county employee in there that would be somewhat a um, a property manager. I don't know if they ended up having to do that or not. Um, I'll, I'll check.
I had some people reach out when, when it was announced that we had a county and we were kind of going partnership. And they were just kind of concerned for impact. And I just wondered if we, you know, reached out to the neighboring properties saying, hey, listen, if there's an issue. This is the number to call. This is how you reach out. Um, a lot of the focus was uh, dogs, you know, that they, if, if these people uh. Would be good dog owners, pick up, yada, yada. So that's something.
Yeah, I'll talk to Ricardo and see if we're hearing anything from anybody at VIX or um, cause I know over the years.
How would they, we hear anything if we don't, if people didn't know?
Right, right. Well, they, they probably have a sign that says managed by Quorum or they would contact us. They know we own it. But I haven't heard anything from anybody at VIX, but we'll make sure that we do a little bit of outreach and um. Don't know how many dogs we have there yet, but.
Lori, with the Highlands Riverfront Begley's property, I know we were owed some, or we expect some deed restricted units coming there at some point. Could we get a refresher on what's an apartment? What's duplex, single family? What's the AMI?
Yeah, yeah, that's um, great. Um, we expect twenty-two deed restricted units in that first phase. Um, I believe they're all duplexes, but they're higher AMIs. And actually I had a call um, from Tom. Uh, last week about sorting to, starting to look at his pricing. So we should be coordinating with him pretty soon, next couple of weeks on how he's gonna roll out those units and what his price points are gonna be. So I'll report back.
Great, thank you.
Lori, I had a question on Berlin Plosser and uh, watching that develop this summer. The, the deed restricted units aren't the first ones coming on market of that. Development. Where do they live at the end of the development?
Um.
Certain single families that can't get, the market rates that can't get sold until the deed restricted are online?
Ours are in the first phase. I think it's units nine and ten. It's two four-bedroom units with a two-car garage each. And I'll pull out the site plan, but I believe ours were. As you turn in, um, the closest on the downhill side, um, where there's construction going on right now. So I don't know if ours is in that particular building. But they're supposed to be in the first phase for sure, but I can find out what the timing is.
You, and then the uh, block eleven apartments, um, are those still on target for next month?
Yeah, I think we'll have um, the first building up before Christmas. So that's the first nine units and then the other two buildings, um, eighteen units, I think that's gonna be mid-January.
And that's all town employees, yes?
There's some childcare um, staff in there.
Thank you.
You know, as far as Berlin Plaza, Plaza, and this isn't Placer, this isn't a Yawwheel House, but I was going to bring it up in other matters. You know, there was a fair amount of washout last year on the Ford and maybe Hermit Plaza, or some of these trails. And on BOSAC last night, we kind of were alerted that some of the issues stems from Berlin Plaza, the runoff and how it's designed and stuff like that. So I just want to kind of put that on everybody's radar screen. I think Scott and Catherine from the county, you know, kind of talking to them, but, but that is an issue. You know, some of that, some of that runoff.
I mean, if the county's in on it, then, because that is.
Yeah, it's the county's problem.
Or they can jump on it, send their inspector.
I'll mention it to Jason when I see him too, because we talk about Berlin Plaza every once in a while, about the status.
Anything else? For Lori? Lori, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a couple of minutes. Do you want to mention that about the governor's staff reaching out to you?
Oh, yeah, I was going to redo it in other matters, but I can't do it now. I have a meeting with, I, I have a Zoom meeting with the governor, the governor's staff, three or four people from the governor's staff on Friday about land use. I called Mara this afternoon, and she is checking on what exactly it is, but I believe it has something to do with this, you know, where the attainable housing land use that Polis wants to drop that that would be outside of our realm, and I am going to argue just the opposite, that for towns like ours that have spent a lot of money and a lot of time building workforce housing, it's not fair that the state would walk in and just change the rules on us and allow anybody to do whatever they want. That's really, it would, it, it seems like it would give every, every developer the same rights that, say, CMC has to just, you know, put up whatever they want because it's housing. The intent.
Developers around the state are trying to blame local jurisdictions being an impediment to them coming in and building workforce housing, right? Too many. Much red tape, takes too long, blah, blah, all those things that, you know, and so they're, apparently they're considering something that would take away all of the local control over that.
So, so changing like single-family home lots to be able to.
It might just be multifamily type developments that would be workforce. Be saying the matter.
It's basically a preemption bill that would create a land use regulatory framework for the statewide, which is more common in other jurisdictions. Colorado is very, we have a lot of homeowners control, so it, it is something that CML has been talking about, and jurisdictions are going to be fighting back hard, and I will say that CML has said this is their number one priority in the next legislative session, because it's getting traction. CML will certainly fight for local control, yes.
Good year. Keep us posted.
Yeah, you know, I don't know if it'll be, I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with the premise for communities that are just not building housing and are just making it difficult to build a housing for whatever NIMBY reasons they are doing it. I don't disagree with it, but for communities like ours that have really spent a lot of time doing this, that just throws everything out the window that we've been doing, so.
You've set a, set a standard of quality.
That's exactly right, and that's really important. So, Lori? Can you give me a, just a brief synopsis of what we've done even in the last five years? And just so I can have some raw numbers to throw at them while we're talking? I can pin them up in front of me, act like I remembered them all.
Depending how that meeting goes, we are represented by the Speaker of the House, so we definitely should set up with a meeting with Julie soon. Get ahead of that.
I was surprised they reached out to me, and I also have a meeting with Sally from Nagusa's office on Thursday, although I think that is just a coffee ketchup. In the morning at the ground.
I went to fading west, and so, and he's very impressed with the project we're doing, so they know that we're doing housing, and so I'm glad they are too.
Which may be one of the reasons that he's reaching out, sending his people to reach out to us, because he does know that we're ahead of the curve for a lot of this.
Makes me wonder if there isn't an evolution as we go forward that's thoughtful and helps with housing, but is different from what we've been doing, right? Yeah, so just something to think about there, right? Like, is, how do we do better with what we're doing?
Well, I, I mean, for, for a private developer to come in to the town right now, if they are doing a hundred percent workforce housing, we give them everything. So I don't know what, other than them not having to follow any of our regulations, which we don't want that, it's gotta, it's gotta have Breckenridge character to it.
Yep.
If you were a private developer and you came in right now and you said, I have a piece of land, I want to do this, what will you do for me? We would waive fees, we would give you water, we could potentially give you density. I mean, we're, we're, we are not an impediment to anybody building deed restricted housing. Now, when you come in, you say, I want you to annex me, and, you know, we want the density, and we're only going to do half workforce housing, that's where, you know, for us, it gets a little dicier, but we would give any, I mean, we've been very vocal and open about what we would give any private developer. The problem is, you make a lot more money building a thirty million dollar home or a fifteen million dollar home on Wellington than you do, you know, building workforce housing, so. So this will be an interesting conversation, and I will definitely keep everybody posted on it.
Cool.
Alrighty, committee reports. John, you got something for us?
I think he's here for events committee. I, I don't think there were any other.
I, I had one, I did have a seat. I had a question, maybe Matt can answer on the, on the summit stage. What, do they know why the Breck to Frisco was down so much? And really, Boreas Pass Loop too? All right, and I'm assuming the Swan Mountain Express is up because they build a bunch of housing for Vale Resorts over there, and they're probably using the Swan Mountain Express to get them to Breck. Oh, that's probably part of it too, yeah, 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 cool.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. I hope you all have had the chance. Sorry, it's my first time. Pleasure. Hope you've all had the chance to read the memo we put together. Not a ton of updates, but just a lot of positive feedback from the ski area opening and the race of the Santas and the lighting of Breck. Any questions?
Do we have any good pictures of lighting of Breck? Can you send us some?
Absolutely.
Awesome. We had some really cool drone pictures from last year that I'd like to sort of compare.
The BTO had a, a big, big member out there, and then a big thanks to Police and Public Works for supporting the vision of the expanded footprint this year.
Awesome.
Anything else?
That was a great event. Really fantastic.
Town of Breckenridge evening, so, yeah. Thank you.
My Gov alerts and reporting.
Hello? Do you guys have any questions? I mean, because it's all right there laid out in your packet.
Brooke, I was curious, we currently get texts being an alert. What exists currently and how does this new Text My Gov kind of work with what is existing?
Yeah, so most likely the texts that you get are probably from the county with like emergency things, like you probably got the fire ones that happened last week. So it'll be a little bit different. It'll be focused more on things that are going on town-wise, like council meetings, roadwork when it's happening in the summer again, that kind of stuff. If there's any road closures because of snow or like anything like that. And then this also creates a way for the community to also talk to us if there's a pothole in the road and we need to be made aware of it, we can take that and take it to Public Works, and then they can go out and fix it and that kind of thing. It also provides them a way to search easily rather than going through our website and searching short-term rentals or council meeting agendas. They can type it into their phone and they'll get a link straight there and they'll be taken that way.
That's cool. Um, how are we pushing this message out to everybody?
So it'll be going out in a press release with our e-notifications, which is another thing that we have through our website. People get those emails, and then it'll also be going out on our social medias, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram.
Is there any way to customize it? Like, if you don't, I don't, I don't have any idea how many texts you might be sending per week, but, you know, if you want to know about roadwork and facility closures, but you don't want upcoming meetings or something like that.
We haven't really experienced that yet, trying to figure, like, we would have to make different groups. And I know that that's possible, so if it gets out of hand, we could definitely do that.
How many are you hoping? Like, what are you, what are you, or what do other communities do that people feel is appropriate?
Yeah, I don't think we have an exact number per week.
Four hundred a day.
Yeah, I just am, I mean, I just signed up, so I guess I'll just test it out, but I feel like a lot of these, it feels like a lot of texts coming in.
Coming in or going, going to you? Okay, we're really going to conserve our texting outward to these people
Okay.
for things that we really feel is important, and we're going to evolve it as more users are signed up for the system. Right now, we only have staff signed up because we haven't, well, we have some from the public who noticed it on our website, but we haven't pushed it out broadly yet. I think we want to understand what people want to see and what they're asking, and then use it as just a secondary tool to communicate information, kind of in tandem with, as Brooke mentioned, the subscription list on the website where we send out. And so we do, I think, have the capability to restrict what, you know, cat, or have categories and have people sign up for certain categories, but we haven't expanded it to that.
Yeah, it may not be necessary at all. I just, I just thought like, oh, roadwork, yeah, great, facility closure is great, and they're like, meetings? I don't want to know about every town of Breckenridge.
Sure.
If anybody needs it, it's you.
For the people want to receive that information via text yet, it's just a capability of the system, and I think we're going to have to just see how it's used. We're also, I mean, we've heard that other communities use this pretty, pretty significantly or robustly, like they, they use it to communicate all their information. I just, I think we're just not sure if people here are going to use it that way, because they have a lot of to get their information, and we try a lot of different methods to communicate with them. You know, Moab is a good example. I think they use it a lot more than we anticipate using it, but they also maybe don't do as much through social media, and those are the things we're going to have to explore. It's not a very expensive program, I think, in communication standards, and it's just another tool in that toolkit of communication.
And there'll be a way to resign and withdraw from it. I'm subscribed.
Subscribe, right?
Like a tat, it's like a tattoo. Can we give Jeffrey the ability to send messages out? I need to say to the people.
Another thing to mention too is that if something goes out from the county, we're not going to make that also one of our messages, so you won't be getting multiple redundant messages that way.
That's great.
Do you anticipate it taking a lot of staff time to manage, or the goal of this is to cut down someone's tax?
Yeah.
Permits and it's a website or?
It'll not create any more work. That's the whole goal. We don't want that. Obviously, it's basically me, Helen and Maddie kind of monitoring them right now, and we won't know until it's fully out to the public how many we get, I guess. Yeah, and.
First item will go to James.
Yeah. Throughout most of them. Yeah, things like that.
I will just add, one of the things that we've struggled for a long time on is getting the community to engage with us. So first was how do we get information to a more broad perspective of our people and that, I think we're doing a pretty good job of that, but we haven't yet figured out how to get, give them the ability to communicate back to us, and so I think this will be a great tool in that toolbox for getting information more than pushing information out.
Already had a couple of instances with people who have texted that number with questions because they maybe didn't feel comfortable calling because of language barriers and things like that, and it's been really interesting to see that they are comfortable texting us. But then when you pick up the phone to call them, they don't actually feel comfortable on the phone, so then, you know, we communicate via text.
That's great.
Cool.
I applaud.
Realized that hugely successfully. That text was way better than email or phone.
I applaud what you guys are doing, because, you know, I think that, you know, just speaking personally, that, you know, social media is, is not something that I engage in, and so this avenue, I think, is more productive, in my opinion, than social media, and the fact that you get feedback that's not, maybe more honest and not broadcast to a large amount of people. I am curious about the, you know, what is the contract? What is the cost? Is it, is it something that we own? Or that, you know, when the, the information, the data, if we do have three thousand subscribers, is that data protected, or does that go out to the, the owner, whoever's software this is?
Yeah, so it, they work with governments everywhere, so they're very well aware of that kind of restrictions that most governments have with data privacy and everything. We do have access to all of those text messages and the numbers and everything like that, and we'll be putting those into a folder to archive them. But they shouldn't be publicly released at any point. Yeah, that's our understanding. I mean, they would fall within regular retention, and I would probably want to work with Kirsten on, on all of that, but the, the software itself is protect, it's very aware, like Brooke said, of government privacy rules, and they, I guess, they do probably only own the data. I'd have to look at the contract, but but they work really only with government entities, so we were really comfortable with the way, the way it does, it worked, and, and we can, it's not a, a long-term commitment with that with that company, so we can at any point pull the plug if we think it's not working and probably take the data back. I, I'd have to check on the specifics in the contract.
Great, well, I, 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 again, just very much in favor of moving forward this, and to Kelly's point, that if there was a early way to set up a dashboard to make this more robust and make more people adopt it, where they can opt in on the different categories, and maybe there's just four of them, right? And they can check the ones that they're interested in or unchecked the ones they're not. I'd love to see this go more broad and have the majority of the town on this, because I think it is a more direct way of getting messages out of importance.
We'll look to set it up in that way from, from the start here.
Yeah, I could see it being useful for events. I'm with Jay, is, you know, let people opt in and out of categories, however they fall.
I don't envy the people answering the text, so.
System if someone texts in another language, how do you, you Google Translate, you use a service, what is the process?
You know, and it's interesting, because those two instances we had, they actually texted in English, but they weren't comfortable speaking in English. And it, I think we would use Google Translate, because that's what we use for others, our other platforms, and it works okay in that kind of basic situation.
Yeah, that's great. That'll be interesting to
Yeah.
see how much comes in and if we need to adjust our, our system, and it is, I mean, I think this is a really creative way to reach different parts of our community, so thanks for taking the lead.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much. Milme, phase two update.
Oh, sorry. Taking care of some other business.
No, tasking.
I don't think there's any questions there. We, I brought this up at the last one. I double-checked with Larissa, and she confirmed that pricing and put that into a memo, which we included in your packet, so I think this is really a good opportunity for us, and it, it felt like you were all supportive, as long as we could confirm that that pricing would in fact be the significant reduction that is spelled out there, so. If you're all good with that, we will move forward with okaying it, and like I said, we'll bring a resolution back to for an appropriate, to it, an appropriation to add that to the capital budget for a Breckenridge history.
It was awesome. Right? Uh, Stilson Property Workforce Housing Discussion. We are a little bit ahead. Anybody? We are a little bit ahead. Anybody need a break?
Sure. We should just because it's gonna be a long.
Yeah. All right. Quick, quick break. Quick.
Large grants from the state. Two of those at the moment, and then an additional one in the new year. It is important to note that there are significantly more grants available that specifically target. Rural resort towns to incentivize the development of for sale housing for the missing middle, which is the AMIs between eighty and one hundred and forty percent. Grantors for this seem supportive and are interested in this project since it would be the first net zero carbon neutral. Affordable housing development in the state. Any grants we receive towards this project can either be leveraged to lower the town's capital investment. Or to further buy down the units for our local workforce. These units will be constructed specifically to meet our energy codes and surpass our town's energy goals. Which leads to a tighter building envelope. Higher insulation requirements, which will address any issues with sound between party walls. And while all while lowering the overall utility costs for homeowners. The development team has estimated that homeowners will save on average upward of fifteen hundred dollars a year with an average utility bill. Of under about forty dollars a month. Um, this will ensure that the homes are affordable in perpetuity for both a resale perspective. And for ongoing cost of homeownership. As we move into entitlements and planning stages. Staff will work concurrently with the development team on a contract that will define roles and responsibilities. The sales and marketing process. With regards to a lottery system outreach to the community and local workforce. And staff will also be working with the USDA on the terms of the deed restrictions to ensure that future homeowners. Are able to utilize better financing opportunities such as little to no down payments and favorable interest rates. We plan to come back to council in January to discuss all of those deal points. And dial in exactly how we will move forward. At today's session, we're looking for feedback as it relates to the overall project programming. This includes the unit types, unit counts, and overall site plan in order to move forward planning and entitlements. We look forward to answering any questions and listening to any comments you may have.
Good afternoon. Um. Well, we're still super excited about this project and I'm just thrilled to be here tonight. And um. We're excited to show you how we've been progressing with the design. And hopefully you can see that we took your advice uh. And concerns at the last meeting into consideration. Um, first, I'd like to introduce you to Jay Garcia. He's with Thrive. And he's here tonight to answer any questions regarding construction. Um, obviously, as you remember last time. Thrive is, you know, one of the national leaders in net zero carbon neutrality and healthy home construction. Um, Andy Stabile. I think most of you know Andy. We've worked together. For a very long time and before that for a very long time. So uh, we've been working together forever. And uh, he's fantastic architect and uh, glad to have him here tonight. Uh, Dan's still working on the project, but he's in Mexico right now. Um, and Lindsay Newman with Norris is here tonight. And she'll be, she'll be talking here in a moment uh, about the site plan and the revisions therein. So maybe what I should do, I'll just step back for a minute. You, you could stay up here since they're operating and I'll come back.
Mayor and Council Lindsay Newman with Norris Design. It's nice to see you all. So. Andy. Yeah, if you want to. Let's start with this one. Let's go a little closer in because you were taking a look at that for a bit. So we can look at some of the bigger site changes that we've made since we saw you last. The big, in the middle there, you'll see one of the bigger changes we made was redesigning the town home layout so that. Is that better? Okay, great. So I was saying in the center at the town home area, we made a pretty big redesign to. Create three plexes rather than four and five plexes. And also separate the parking for each unit so that each unit has designated parking right in front of its building that will lead into a attached garage. Each town home has two surface parking spaces. As well as a small patio space and then landscape area that will separate between the two in the center. So it creates a little bit more of a private front yard feeling um, that could be individualized as well as separated parking. Um, we did angle the alley a bit to help facilitate some um, bigger open spaces where the number twos are to create some neighborhood green spaces. As well as angling horseshoe loop at the north. Um, a little bit more north so that we were able to open up some key park areas that will have. Green space while keeping in mind low water use and um, sustainability with our landscaping. Other changes, um, we have. Looked at traffic calming and along Staples Drive, so um, we aligned our. Sidewalks, so there's the one along the north. Yep, um, with a crosswalk there and then we have one at the center. And that aligns with the Lincoln Park green spaces as well, and then another one at the south. And we haven't fully. Um. You know, dove into the design of what those crosswalks could be, but similar to what we did over at Alta Verde. Was looking at raised crosswalks, so a table and um, lots of other options that we can look at here to. Facilitate traffic calming, we understand the importance. So just identifying those key spots is the first step and then we will. As we move forward, design, look at how we can. Make sure that we are slowing people down as they approach those crosswalks. Another big change that was mentioned briefly was the addition of the single family homes. We now have five single family homes scattered throughout the outer loop and then two on the inner. So there's three on the outer loop and then two on the inner loop. Um, so for a total of sixty-three units as opposed to the last plan that you saw, that was sixty-four units. And then we are showing connectivity north to south from bus stop to the bike park. Which is an important connection with that maintaining that buffer. Oh, you're the IT guy. There we go. Thank you. Yeah, you got it. And maintaining that buffer from Staples Drive to the homes. Of thirty to fifty feet in different areas. So those are the key changes. Um, I don't. If you were going to run through some other slides, Andy, before we open it up to questions. Okay, you want to come back?
So the other thing we've been working on is um, we've been working with REG Resource Engineering Group. Out of Crested Butte, I think you guys know them. They're awesome. Green um, on the forefront of anything sustainable. Um, and they have done some studies for us, giving us the efficiency of the different um, solar facing roofs. Um, whether they face east, west, south, um, or somewhere in between. And based on that and, and our square footages and our square footages of our roofs. We've come to the conclusion that we have to go with shed roofs. There's no other option. If we want to be net zero, we have to use shed roofs. So um. Basically, uh, this has driven our architectural design to shed roofs, which is actually kind of fun. Um, and I think, you know, with these designs, we will be able to meet our sustainability goals. And I think, you know, you've seen some of this in the packet. But um, you know, we looked at some precedent imagery, um, if you want to pull that up really quickly just for fun. Um, and I think, you know, a lot of these are, these structures are very simple to build. Um, which helps us with construction costs. And keeping, you know, these units affordable. So I think it's, it's, it's a win-win in every direction, but it means that we have to have a lot of shed roofs on these, on, in this subdivision. We've also been speaking with multiple realtors about the project. Um. Obviously, we haven't selected anyone yet and um. One of the interesting things that one of them mentioned to me was. Well, are, are we setting up the website? And oh yeah, we're going to set up the website together. You know, that's going to be a marketing thing. Obviously, it's going to be there for perpetuity for the HOA. Um. And she said, well, are you doing, are you going to do a page in French and a page in Spanish? And I was like. Uh, hadn't thought of that. And, and actually it's a really good idea because I was like, yeah, French, yeah, Spanish, because I coach at the high school. I've been a coach. For the basketball girls' basketball for eight years and um. Every year I have French girls that come out on my court. They speak zero English and their parents work at City Market, Walgreens, you know, all those kinds of places that we see them. They're from Africa and um, so I think, I think, you know. All these things are amazing and great ideas, so I definitely um, was like, yeah, I'm on board with that. That sounds great. But we are kind of just. Talking to a bunch of different realtors and um, trying to. Figure out, you know, where we go from here with the Housing Authority too. Let's see. So, oh, and the other thing, I think Carol, you had asked at the last meeting, you know, what's up with the rest of the site? When we squeezed to the sixty-four units, we just sort of took up part of the site. So we took a glance at, you know, this is just one thing that could happen, but just taking a look at the future access road up top. To that lower site and um. And then how many lots could fit in there potentially and how many units could that be? Um, you know, we could easily fit, I think it was nineteen lots. Is that correct? Yeah. And then, you know, depending on how many were duplexes and single family twenty-four to, you know, close to forty units. So. I think that aligns with the original RFP, which was asking for ninety to a hundred units on the site. So I think it still works. Great for any future use that the town, if, if the town wanted to put housing on that portion of the site in the future. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, questions? So. The price is going to go from three oh seven to seven sixty-nine? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, that's a hundred and forty percent AMI, uh, four bedroom down to a two bedroom, like one of the town homes, eighty percent AMI, right?
So top end would be three sixty-nine K?
The, the bottom? Yeah, yeah, yep.
The cost and for, excuse me, and for the people who are buying it or only for the cost?
That's, that's, that's what we could sell it for with the eighty percent to a hundred and forty percent AMI. So those are the, it's, it's restricted by the, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we'll create a deed restriction that provides, typically we do a buffer on the income side.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
There'll be an income test.
We talked a lot about this in the Housing Committee meeting, which I can share in a sec after we get to questions. The question. Where are we on ADUs here on these, uh, like everyone has their garage? Are we having apartments above? Are there any possibilities for ADUs?
Not really, not really right now. We have the garages integral. It's in, within the building. So um, people aren't being charged an extra fee for that garage or having that garage built like in the Wellington. Um, so everyone gets a garage. Um, some, some units have two, two car garage. And some units have, like the townhomes have one car garage. So.
And Suzanne. How did you guys come to the half moon design versus sticking with? What is, what's the surrounding areas of the more of the, the grid style?
So if you go out on that site, that's actually the flat area that aligns with the grade of Lincoln Park and Wellington. It kind of comes across there and it actually is that shape. It's kind of funny because we're calling it horseshoe drive and Staples, you know, Village. But it just sort of is a half circle basically of land that's at that same grade elevation. And then that other section, you know, where um. Where Public Works has all their rocks and all their junk, sorry, Public Works. Um, uh, is, is, is down significantly. It's, it's a significant drop. If you walk over to the edge behind where the stables are, there's a significant drop and that section is at a completely different elevation. So it just makes sense from a topography standpoint and cost of construction and infrastructure to kind of leave that section. Alone and, and build on the upper section that ties right in to the utilities and stuff of Lincoln Park.
What's the formula for, uh, how do you guys do parking? Like say a um, three bedroom house or a three bedroom, uh. Let's say a hillside duplex three bedroom, how many parking spots would they have? And would that be included? Like I'm guessing the garage is a one car garage. So how many additional spots would you have? And is it available on the, on their pad?
So right now what we have is every unit has one inside garage except for these uphill units up in here where we didn't have, uh, where we have room to go. As a tandem garage, uh, so those, basically every unit has two parking spots. That, that's our baseline. The places where we get extra parking is in the townhomes, which have two spots per townhome. And a garage. So every townhome unit actually has three parking spots. Which we thought as we start to dial it in, maybe some of those. Overflow parking spots might become visitor parking for the townhomes. That sort of thing as we start to dial that in, but, but essentially every, every unit has two spots. The, the single family homes have three. Because they'll have two surface spots, yeah, for the single family homes.
And then the, where that number three is, is a parking lot. So there are seven parking spaces there just for guests.
And when you say two spots, one inside, one directly out in front of it?
That's right.
Okay.
So where would you expect someone to park if they were like that, one of those first homes? Yeah. If they have a guest, because everyone has two cars. So. There's really no, they would park at that central. There's no other parking.
Right now, we explored some options that spread more. You know, two and three group clusters of, of parking around the rest of the site, but it created so many curb cuts. That um, that started to be prohibitive. So we were asked to sort of consolidate that into that one spot.
So did you measure how far that parking is from that house and compare it to like Lincoln and Wellington?
We haven't done that comparison.
Maybe I would like to have that information.
One other thing we can do too is when you look at the parking apron, we could extend it a little bit on each side to provide for two side by side and then the one for the hush.
Yeah, for sure. Because you can see. Absolutely.
I think that would be um, a really good idea for that neighborhood.
Yeah. As we realized teenagers get cars and the families grow up.
A lot of people put them in use their garage for their cars.
Other questions?
From an open space. Perspective, um, in looking at this and not knowing percentages. I feel that, you know, with the prevalence of three bedroom units, you're having families in here. I just, I don't see a lot of area for families to go and play. Um, I know this is a very trail-rich area that has the, the pump track that has. A lot of trails and things, but I'm just thinking about. Six and seven year olds racing around on motor scooters, a lot of horseshoe drive and not in an open space that's designated.
Yeah, if you look at um, those in Lincoln Park. The, those spaces and then you kind of compare how much space that is to where the number two is in both locations. There's like an equal amount of space there. And if we showed that as a green. Kind of with those, not circles, but um, I don't know what those are, but egg shaped spaces. Um, we could fit those in those spaces. So, so we have the space. What we're up against is um, trying to not have as much green space. Or not have, not as, not green space, but just not have as much grass. So we're showing smaller strips of grass where you could throw a football, you could do some stuff, but it's not. The water waste of those huge greens. So we, we're kind of toying with that, but we have the space. And we could overlay that for you guys if you want to, like overlay. You know, Lincoln Parks onto ours, which.
And if that is a concern, and maybe this is a more staff question where I know we're going to consider a master plan for this entire site. Which I think would be really helpful, both I think we need to memorialize some Public Works usage that we want some of that closer to town. And then maybe just looking at the density of housing that we do need another. Large shared green space within a master plan. And I think as we're looking at these designs, like I do have a couple. More detailed thoughts with parking. I mean, this is the closest neighborhood to Gibson Heights. And there are, I think, a lot of learning opportunities there. The challenge with parking within the townhomes. And single family, it's not an issue because those driveways are significantly longer. Two cars can park back to back. So that might be an approach to pushing the houses back and lengthening the driveway if there's space for that. Um. But again, at a high level, I would like to see this entire site. Master planned out. So we know strategically where we're going. Public Works, if we want more green space, if we want to consider a phase two of housing or not, I think at this step, we should memorialize that.
The other thing that is different with this subdivision versus like Lincoln Park and Wellington. Is that there's a lot more space between the buildings. There's actually a yard. To the side and a yard to the front. So there's more uh, open space on. Adjacent to your unit. So. As an FYI.
Well, quick questions and I'll, I'll start with the trail one uh, first. Are there any trails kind of off to the south connecting into like the Wellington Trail so far? Like one, one maybe easy spot would be like between ten and eleven where the parking is, but just trying to disperse. Get folks outside easier, like dog walk kind of loops. Do you have anything on there? That I'm missing?
I'm a little confused. What? Say that again?
So there's a trail that if, if you're looking at the paper, like on the left side, the Wellington Trail is over there by the power lines, right?
Yeah.
So I'm curious if there's any trail connectivity.
So.
Between like sixteen and fourteen or ten and eleven or?
So it, it really drops off at ten, um, starts to drop off. That's where that grade changes. We're not showing anything at this point, but certainly there, you know, a trail could be built there. Um, we were thinking everyone would jump on the loop, horseshoe loop, and then jump onto the bike path that we've created. That's going to go all the way to the, to those trails, to the bike park and to those trails, trailhead.
Yeah, I think some extra connectivity there would be valuable just for, yeah, morning walk kind of things. From what I've seen.
Yeah.
Usage wise over there would be cool. Um, run me through the breakdown on the garages. How many one bedroom or sorry, one car garages and two car garages do we have?
Basically, everything except units, uh, fourteen along this outer portion of the loop. Everything has one car inside and one car outside. We didn't have room in these driveways. They, they're, we are showing a car right there, but, but really I don't think that it would fit right there. We don't quite have room to push these back. So these all get tandem inside spots. So they all, they, the, the hillside lots up here have tandem interior garages. Everything else has one interior garage and one surface.
And that includes the townhomes.
Well, the townhomes have two spots.
Well, they have one, yeah, and they have one in, interior.
The townhomes have a one car garage, including the two bedrooms, plus the exterior, right?
Plus two spaces outside.
Do the two bedroom uphill duplexes have a tandem garage as well? So those are two bedroom, two car garages. So that's. Okay, so twelve units with two car garages then. And then a bunch without, um. Is there the possibility, I mean, the, the tandem concerns me a little bit from having tried to. Work through selling a bunch of those and then the one car certainly concerns me. You know, I'd love to see in a perfect world, right? Side by side, two car garages. It's just. The price points with a one car garage that we're trying to hit, give me a little pause. It's not optimal for. What we're trying to cater to here. Yeah, any thoughts there?
Right now, uh, the unit size that we're using to get this many units on the site is a twenty-two foot width. Overall, for each unit is twenty-two feet wide. So to get a two car garage accessed off the street would take that whole twenty-two feet. We wouldn't necessarily have room in the current design for. An entry.
But you said the, the width of the lots is already wider than.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly could. Expand that twenty-two foot width. We're also trying to create efficiencies with our construction. So and costs. So we've gone twenty-two foot wide is like throughout the whole subdivision. So. And we're trying to, you know, create modules. This is way beyond this conversation, but uh, maybe in housing, we could talk about that, but so that we can build these super efficiently.
Yeah, I wonder if that's worth looking at, because I think trying to hit that like five, six hundred thousand dollar price point, a one car garage where you got to park out in front with maybe not even a third parking pad.
No, we're going to have third parking pads. We can do that.
What is the square footage of? Like, give us a ballpark square footage of like the two bedroom and then the.
Thirteen feet to nineteen fifty-ish?
Right.
And the four, so the four bedroom house is.
Nineteen fifty, yep. And the smallest two bedroom townhouse is thirteen.
Yeah, I think we have it in a spreadsheet. It should be in the packet.
It'd be really helpful or cool, I think, if it's not too much of a burden on the like planning side to. To, to spend a little bit of time so we could understand if the, if the. What it would cost basically to, to do the side by side garage and.
Yeah, it's just cost. For sure. I think we could fit it. I don't know. We'll have to look, we'll have to study it, but. Think we could fit the side by side in a lot of cases, obviously not the townhomes.
Yeah.
But, um, but you can see because we're on that curve. There's a lot of space between every building. So.
Yeah, thank you for taking a little time on that. And then I'm curious on the, on the two bedrooms, is the footprint for the two bedroom duplexes? Essentially the same as the three bedroom duplexes? And then same thing on the townhomes, I guess. Like, how's the footprint book on those two buildings? Is it? Is it a couple of feet or is it the same?
Yeah, so what we did is on the um, the, the two bedrooms and the three bedroom units on the down slope, basically. Um, most of these, the, the lower two floors are the same, whether it's a two or a three bedroom. We pop a little bit of a, that, that master suite goes up above the garage on the three bedroom unit. So the footprint is the same. Lower two levels are the same. It's just a matter that if it gets that third bedroom, it gets a pop. Uh, and that enables us to kind of vary the architecture a little bit as well, so that it doesn't just look too homogeneous. You can, this is a super rough sketch, but you can, um, when we get into this, you can kind of start to see that that's a two bedroom unit, that's a three bedroom unit. Then there's a three bedroom unit with a two bedroom unit next to it. So that starts to enable us to, to kind of vary those roof lines a little bit so that they all, they don't all look identical. Uh, well, these, it, it's kind of hard to see from these angles. But, but it is starting to go on. I think these are some of the. It's kind of hard to see in these, but um, but yeah, that's how we do it is the, the footprints are the same, the lower two levels are the same. And it's the same for the, the um, the uphill units, basically. The lower two levels are the same. It's just a matter, are we getting two bedrooms on that top floor or three bedrooms? Or I'm sorry, are we getting one bedroom on the top floor or two bedrooms? That turns it from a two to a three bedroom and that, that helps us vary the architecture just a little bit too.
Awesome. No, that's great stuff. I'm super excited about the work you're doing.
The massing and so that it's not just all the same height.
Yeah, and I think the, what I saw over at Smith Ranch from doing close to two hundred sales over there, that, that tandem garage and even the one car with the, the parking outside is. It's a lot easier if it's side by side, right? On the, the sales uptake. So that's where that question is coming from. So thank you.
Yeah.
Is a, like a. A two bedroom garage, you kind of that, that have one car in front of the other and not side by side. Is that like? Kind of like kissing your sister, people aren't into that? No, yeah, I mean, so that's, that's not a selling point. Like if you say, oh, it's a two car garage, but, but one in front of the other, that's just not a.
Not optimal, right? And then as we push up the price range there, it's like. It's kind of like, oh man, I'm, like, everybody wants a garage, right? Side by side, super nice, gear in there, both cars. You can bring guests over, like everybody's going to have friends come over. So. Yeah, it's not optimal. I, I think it hurts us on the sales.
In like, on a, like on the, say a one car garage. Yeah, say you have like a. Forerunner. How, um, I'm sure you do. How much on either side of the car would you have?
It, it's going to be pretty minimal, uh, to keep that twenty-two feet. Uh, the twenty-two foot unit width, what we've done in a lot of these units is try and make them a little extra deep so that there's storage at the back end of the garage, whether it's. You know, actually built in storage closets or room for bikes, that would go on kind of the back wall because we're a little bit deeper than your forerunner. Uh, for the, for the garage. We're, we're twelve feet wide, but, but typically we're trying to be, you know, a minimal, a minimal depth might be. Twenty feet and we're trying to increase that by four to six feet in every unit.
Feet side by side, yeah.
And then on those uphill duplexes, we've got, they're super deep. Because we have, we have tons of storage, because it's, those buildings are forty-six feet long. So like a typical tandem in the Highlands is thirty-six feet. So we get ten extra feet. So they're huge.
Um, question for Lori and Melanie. Um, looking at our community, who we're trying to serve. We have quite a few two bedroom units. I mean, anecdotally, I'm hearing people are trying to get out of those units, like more the family units, three bedrooms plus. Why did we go with so many two bedrooms?
We have fourteen two bedrooms right now. Um. And we want, we.
We have fourteen two bedrooms right now. Um, and we want, we, we just thought that. That's something we'd want to offer. We also want to be conscious of, we've had a, a quite a bit of back and forth on the bedroom count. Go higher, go lower. So we kind of thought that this would be the medium um, by fourteen of those, out of those sixty-four. Um, as I mentioned, majority are gonna be those three bedrooms, which I think is our sweet spot. And the one thing to note as well that. Um, we just, we haven't, we haven't uh finalized any of the floor plans, but. Um, one nicer note is that all of these have a half bath as well. So it's a two bedroom, two and a half bath. Um, same with three bedroom and so on, which I think just adds that um, that visitor access and, and more livable. So the majority definitely are free.
So Lori, if, if um. You say the uh, top end unit would be seven sixty-nine. What's a, what's a Wellington unit sell right now?
Wellington, four bedroom Wellington.
Yeah.
I don't think we have any four bedrooms need restricted, do we?
No.
No.
What?
Uh, what is?
Ballpark, I don't need.
Kelly, do you want to handle this one?
Four bedroom with the garage department that I sold was five fifty. But it's really low. I mean, those Lincoln Park ones, like eight years ago when they were brand new, they were already selling for seven hundred, six fifty to seven hundred.
Right.
And, and I'm not even sure what I'm asking. Um, but yeah, maybe Todd can speak to that. But so we have, I mean, I, I just talked to some folks in the Wellington last night. They said it's, it's insulated like a sieve. So now we have, we have some, you know, uh, carbon neutral, uh, uh, you know, kind of a nicer places. Um, uh, that, that, that are similar to in the price range. What will this do to the market? Like, how, how do you, how do you foresee the transition from a, from say, uh, uh, Gibsonite, so Wellington to a. This uh, stables uh, uh, project?
There is so much demand for a for sale product. Um. That five hundred to eight hundred thousand that. Um, I think anybody that wants to sell their unit in that price range is gonna have a long line of buyers that want to buy their unit.
So you, you see someone seeing these, saying, oh, these are pisser. And then say, I'm gonna move out of the Wellington and they'll be able to sell their Wellington. And it won't be a huge bump to get into one of these places. And it will be a similar deed restriction.
Right. Um, similar deed restriction. Um. Yeah, I think um, if people choose to uh, move from Wellington to this neighborhood. I don't see anybody in Wellington ever having an issue selling their unit. There's, they sell with just a whisper.
Yeah. And Jeffrey, one thing we talked about in housing is uh, in, in some of it came. From an equity discussion, you know, and, and I'd like to see us form an ad hoc committee. To kind of study the sales piece, you know, and, you know, Suzanne, I think in her development company wants to. To drive the sales, you know, and, and so have an ad hoc committee kind of talk about. Where the housing authority's role is in all of this and really define that a little better. Um, maybe look at some criteria for Suzanne, work with Suzanne to really. Get the right criteria so we get the right salespeople. We also talked about things like. You know, we want to mix in, give some first time home buyers some opportunities. Here, where it's not all just upgrading, you know, and, and people moving up. So. Maybe you give them an extra ball in the lottery or something.
Yeah.
You know, to, to build in some of that. Um, I, I think there's some, some issues we need to talk about. We need to. I, I would like to see, and Carol brought this up, and I think it's very valid. I mean, I think we measure, you know, diversity and inclusion in our workforce housing by. What is the makeup of the list of the people in the lottery?
Yeah.
And is it reflective of our workforce? Maybe not of, of Breckenridge proper citizens, but our workforce in the upper blue. And how do we get there? And how do we challenge the developers or work with the developers and be a good partner? To really look at a different way in how we're doing this. With our, you know, we're investing so much in housing right now. And are we doing it for everybody? And I think it's time we start asking ourselves that question and. And so I, I see a, a committee where we've got, you know, staff. Um, developer representation, a couple of us on council, maybe work on it. Where we can communicate with the county, communicate with the housing authority. Really figure out maybe a better, a better way so we can get there. And um. You know, it's, it, it's a huge investment and um. You know, I, yeah, I mean, I, I get excited thinking about this opportunity. Um, you know, I look at designs, it, you know, I think it looks great. No. No project like this is perfect. No location is perfect. But uh, um, I. I personally feel like this is a, a great spot for a development of this. Do we have any concern that a hundred and seventy-eight bedrooms, you know, so. People are lucky, they might be, you know, two hundred and fifty people, you know, I mean, they'll be sharing bedrooms. What could that do to Wellington Riling Road? Yeah, as far as uh, do we let accommodate that? Is that gonna, gonna change the whole Feng Shui of uh, of that area? I, I mean, I think all of our comments are anecdotal at this point. I personally don't. I mean, it's not like we see. You know, long queues at, at the intersections now. I think there's more capacity. You know, for, for more housing and, and there's such a need, you know, we've got to balance. The need against the impacts and, and the locations against the impacts. So I'll take the other side of that argument when I make my comments.
And Jeffrey, just a way in there.
I disagree.
It's better than them driving from Silverthorne. The number of folks that I've seen migrating out of Breckenridge to move to Silverthorne, because they can only afford Smith Ranch. So we've added, because we don't have the housing capacity in our own community, we've added all this traffic on Highway Nine that could just be on the bus.
Or they end up getting jobs at Silverthorne. But, but I, I, whatever, I am, and I get to, is there, does anyway, we can study that? I mean, is there any?
So we have, we have done a traffic study. Um, the traffic study came back that there aren't. The additional number of units this is gonna be is not enough to trigger any major improvements. So anything that we do. We, we can do, but it is not triggered by this, this, these additional units. And actually, that study was done at the. Um, RFP of ninety units.
So is there a level of service now on that road or is that for bigger roads than that? Like, does it have an A or whatever, a level of service in the parking study?
I would need to get that for you.
I think it's intersections, not road itself, I believe, is how they rate those things.
But isn't that what we would be talking about?
Yeah, you'd be talking about the intersections on either side, either down Riley or the other way.
I think Shannon has that.
Uh, any other questions? Then we'll go to comments.
Last question, I think this is gonna be for Rick, is, you know, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars per bedroom town investment on this. When you look at that for two hundred thousand dollars for a two bedroom or four hundred thousand dollars for a four bedroom. How does that measure up to the buy downs for the, the, the different things that in, in your world when you're managing this?
Well, is it a hundred thousand per bedroom or per unit?
It's per bedroom if you add everything in, not the, not the seven million, the seven million's forty thousand.
Right now, we're spending about eighty-six thousand per bedroom for buy downs. Is what we're spending, so.
Yes.
That number includes infrastructure.
Yeah, that includes your infrastructure. So I think it's, and then look at, so look at what you get versus. Because these people, I mean, if you, we talk about, I mean, we're trying to sell a Kennington place. That we bought down for six hundred thousand dollars with no garage, right? And uh, and a high HOA.
Right.
On a lot of these units. And so, um, I, I think. I mean, we feel good about that subsidy price based on what we're doing with buy downs.
If there are grants, who gets that? Who gets that money?
Well, I think that's, I think there's philosophically, there's a couple of things we could do with that. If we. Want to do, we could certainly save money from the town, because the, the grants would come to the town. And offset our cost. Or we, as, if we wanted to, and we, it was talked about in the housing committee. You know, we could commit to either a hundred percent or fifty percent of that grant money going back into the. Maybe buy down some cheap. People to make them even more affordable if we wanted to. Um. So.
I think before.
I think there's flexibility there down there.
Before we see this again, it would be tremendously helpful to see unit type and the potential costs for the eventual buyer. If we have that information.
Wait, I thought we have it now, didn't you? Yeah, we have it.
Each unit type and what the sale price is.
Yeah. I think, I mean, we could rattle that off, but we could also tell you that. We, I mean, the lowest price, right? The, the eighty percent. Eighty percent AMI two bedroom townhome is gonna be three one. Three oh seven. And then, you know, then it goes up to the, obviously the seven, whatever, for the four bedroom single family. And nineteen hundred square feet.
And we envision the deed restriction being the same as it would be in the Wellington or, or all our other deeds.
Well, it would be a upgrade to the Wellington deed restriction, which is one of our first deed restrictions and allows, you know, a lot of. Appreciation price creep. So um, I, I assume that our um, annual appreciation will be around two percent on these. Um, we'll have income caps on everything. Um, live work um, for business located in and serving. Um, you know, Wellington was one of our early deed restrictions. I think we learned a few things from that one.
There's so much community interest in this project, because it is gonna be an incredible opportunity for those that can buy it. Um, I think it's critical that we see all those steps. What's gonna be in the deed restriction? Um, even working with you all on marketing or being a partner. Um, I think that will be a critical step. We recently learned with AltaVerde one, translation isn't enough. So I really like hearing that you're planning to form an ad hoc committee and we do need to. Involve a variety of community members for mountain dreamers, get different community members to the board so they can. Have input. But I think as much information that you can share with us, because. I think we are in this desperate position for housing where garage or no garage, these are gonna sell. But people are interested and we want to do as best as we can. So the more detail you can provide to us at, any step is gonna be. Helpful in letting us voice what we're hearing from our respective circles.
And that would be our next step to come back in January um, with more pricing documents. Um, our, our contract that we're gonna put together with them and, and really go through all of those steps with all of you and, and provide good feedback. And the, the parts of the business deal right now, it's just overall. Forward. Um, and then once, once we decide which way we're gonna go, we'd be happy to work with you guys on all of that, of course.
All right, let's go to comments. Do you want to continue where you left off?
Um, no, I mean, I kind of said, I'll, I'll go later.
They're putting some thoughts together. I'd love to go later.
Or do you want to go later too?
Oh, I'm happy to go now. Um.
What do you think? He's Todd? He's ready.
I look at this um, this development and I, I, my appreciation for you Suzanne and. Uh, Andy and Lindsay and Lori and everyone that's put time into this is um, immeasurable. Like. I'm so greatly appreciative that we have partners in this community. Um, and I'm very. I'm interested to see other examples that Thrive and Jay has worked in, in, in the state or, you know, in um, seen kind of. Uh, other examples of work as, at this time period, as would, we would expect. The details are still a little vague. You know, we don't, for a good reason, we don't have floor plans yet. We don't know exactly how the logistics work. Um, but I really love the target of the AMI. The, the fact that we're setting the precedent and the example of net zero just goes to show how. Breckenridge is again a leader i- in that, in that space. Um. I think eliminating the ADU question, while I think in. I guess, i- in a um, a snippet, sounds bad. I personally, I'm really happy that we don't have that kind of vagueness of ADUs where we don't know whether. All right, we got a hundred and seventy-eight bedrooms now, or we don't have, you know, two hundred and sixty, once this is built out and. People build their garage and put a space up there or whatever it is. So I'm, I'm happy that that's kind of been already. Um, factored in, if you will, or, or eliminated. Um. I would love to go and walk the site with council at some point, so that we can kind of see the different demogra- uh. Geography of it and why things are done. I think that might be more of an aha moment. Um, and, and just to get an idea of the open space, I really. Having lived in the Wellington for thirteen years prior and, you know, be in that area, you know. To have a place where the kids are safe and, you know, they'll, and to see how that open space really translates to that in the space in between the, the houses and. Does it make sense to have a hundred and seventy bedrooms instead of a hundred and seventy-eight and uh. And have some pocket parks in there that would allow that designated. Space for kids to, to migrate to. Um, I remember, you know, I didn't have kids when I lived in the Wellington, but. You know, opening the door and just seeing that, you know, seven AM on Sunday mornings, they're just all flooding out. Uh, and to see them be able to gather in a, in a safe place, uh, especially as. Um, that street gets busier as Wellington gets busier and we want to keep them uh, insulated from that. Um, other than that, I, I really, I think that the product mix is right. We've spoken. Um, with others in the community about the product mix and whether. We have too many two bedrooms uh, in, in this current situation and. I, I think when we think about it, we want all three bedrooms, right? We want a place that it is, but I do think you look at places like the Kennington and there are. Lifelong locals in couples that live in two bedrooms in Kennington and are super happy. And so. I think it, I, I don't, I think the product mix on this is very well thought out and I think it works very well. And uh, I, I do, I look forward to the next rendition. I agree with Carol that I would love to see just some. Kind of game planning of what the rest of this could look like to make sure that um. It is thought out correctly and that we have the, the right stepping stone uh, in place. Um, but all in all, I, I really appreciate the work and I, I think it's off to a great start and. Um, yeah, look forward to a site visit.
Carol?
We need housing. We need for purchase housing and I think this is a step in the right direction. I think. I, one of my hesitations I voiced last meeting, Lori took time to meet with me one-on-one and that was helpful. Um, but just making sure we're as strategic as possible. This isn't an ordinance that we can amend. It's buildings in the ground. Once they're in, they're in. Um, so I would really like to see that master plan of this. Entire site. Um, I'd like to just vet the covenant, the end unit costs. To really help us nail down what portion of our community are we helping? And who are we highly subsidizing? Is that at the right AMI target? Um, and. The diversity of housing is great between the townhomes, single family duplexes. Again, that's the most similar to my neighborhood and it's a great formula. Um, I'm not ready to get into the details of this, because some of those higher level questions I have with the master plan. With the cost, with the covenant, I think those need to be ironed out before I'm willing to go forward with this project.
Um, I, I think that, whoa, sorry. Um, yeah, I, 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 I love the way this looks. I, and I love the carbon neutral, all, all that and. Um, you know, one thing I would say is, I like narrow streets. You know, the, I, I loved, I love what, you know, I'll leave it to greater minds.
You know, the I I loved, I love what, you know, I'll leave it to greater minds and me to kind of fine tune everything. I think it's kind of, for me, it's the right church, but the wrong pew. I am very worried about putting. On two hundred and two hundred and fifty people in this area, uh, which is already highly developed in an area that kind of uh houses. Most of our locals and that concerns me. Maybe I can be seduced. Um, but I I I'd like to, uh, you know, and I'm not going to stick a fork in it. But uh, you know, I'm I'm very leery of putting uh all these bodies here or surrounded by. Gibson Heights, uh, Lincoln Park, Wellington and all that. I would like uh, if if it goes through and I think, I think from the. The mood I'm getting it, it probably, you know, we're going to move forward and and we'll get a better project as we as we progress. I'm into narrow streets. I like Wellington because of the narrow streets. I think it slows people down. Um, I I I I have a little bit different feeling towards it than the than Jay. You know, I grew up playing in the streets and and so I, you know, I. Anytime it's green, you have to water it unless you do buffalo grass and all that. But. Yeah, I'll, you know, I I I I think I'll reluctantly look, look for the next iteration of this thing, but. I am very worried about the impact on Wellington, Riling Road and also the impact on the people that live in Lincoln, Lincoln uh. Park in uh, in in Wellington.
Todd, you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Um, yeah, I love the start. Um, and I think this is a great project. As as Carol said, we need housing and uh. We need three bedrooms. Um, one of the things I'd love to see, because I think there will be. An impact on the open space and trails nearby is is maybe open space to look at. Like a a trails kind of master plan of like, do you add some sort of Betty's type thing to get some dog walk loops and to take some of the load. Off of the existing infrastructure that we have because you're adding folks to the community there and is there a thoughtful way to? Make the open space connectivity good. Um, so that's just one thought. I went back through Smith Ranch in the last two phases. There were forty seven homes with side by side garages. There were sixteen with the single car and then a tandem out front and then there were. And those were all town homes, the sixteen. And then there were four towns of town homes with a one car garage. Um, and then there were four without uh any garage. Uh, I've got concerns on the sales front. I just worry, you know, obviously we want to see this built and the design looks amazing and, you know, the direction we're going is phenomenal. Just want to make sure the uptake at the price points we're asking that the product we're putting out there. Is commensurate and 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 gets us sales. So I I'm I'm concerned about that garage setup. Um, and and looking at. What a two car garage side by side, how to do that, maybe not on all of them, but some of those to to maybe mix up the blend there uh to give us a broader spectrum would be valuable. And then one of the things I've been. I I think struggling with. In general in our community is. I I hear so many folks that leave after. Four to five years as their family expands and I had asked Lori to put together, Lori and Corey to put together a account of our our three bedrooms. Um, of the for sale um deed restricted stock that we have in the community. And I I think, you know, we've got over a thousand homes that 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 are that are for sale that are deed restricted in Breck. I think two hundred and eighty one of those are three bedrooms. Um, I'd love to see a few more of these be three bedrooms because I think it's such a valuable and important piece to folks stay. And I think there's with the footprints that we've got. I the 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 the. Costs, the extra costs there is it's the cheapest. Obviously, you know this, right? Like the, it's the cheapest part of the house to build is is adding a bedroom. Personally, I think if we had to bump up our subsidy to. Get the side by side garages um and and get a third bedroom on a handful of those duplexes. I I'd love to see that because again, I think that's an investment. In kind of the 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 knowledge that all our workers have in Breckenridge. So an extra six, seven, three bedrooms wouldn't hurt my feelings. And I I think. That's the gist of it. Yeah, so good work so far and look forward to seeing this thing evolve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I agree with much of what has been said already. I I really like the direction we're headed and I really. Appreciate you listening to us and tweaking it and commitment to con- continue doing that. You know, I think the net zero, but more importantly, or or additionally, the the carbon neutral is huge, you know, and I think it. It shows us as as cutting edge and it also, I think, will open the doors to some uh. Some um grants and such. So. I also think, you know, and I and I don't want to beat a horse on this location piece, but I. You just expound a little on why I think this is the right location, whereas I recognize it's going to put some pressure on Riling and and Wellington. But anywhere we build is going to put pressure on roads and if we're building out on McCain. We're putting a hell of a lot of pressure on Airport Road. You know, we're going to getting ready to spend a fortune on Airport Road in the next five years to improve that. Wherever we build, we're putting tremendous pressure on on our roads and. To me, this is, this is an ideal location because, you know, we've got, got the bus. You can walk. You know, you can ride your bike. It's 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 um and. Many that live there now do already. So. So for those reasons, I do think it, whereas it's not the perfect location, I don't think one exists. But I think it's the best. I I I hear many conversations around the the three and four bedroom for sale units. And I don't disagree. I think we keep that in mind when we start talking about block eleven. And what we want, you know, what that should look like when we develop block eleven. And I think it's screaming three and four bedroom, single family for sale homes, but that's a discussion coming in the future. The covenants and the details, I mean, Carol, great for bringing that up. I, you know, being on the housing committee. For the last few years, I've really seen those things evolve. So. Whereas, yes, we do need to share those details, but but we're going to benefit from those. Evolving and learning from the past. I mean, Lori's put together this amazing team that's worked incredibly hard and gotten. An amazing amount of work done around these type details. And setting us up for success around compliance. And livability and and and, you know, eliminating issues we've had in the past as part of the learning curve of this. So um. Great job. Um, look forward to seeing it continue to evolve and uh really appreciate working with you guys.
Um, I'll echo lots of, I was going to say thanks, but Jay did a really nice job of. Thanking everybody for working with us on this and. I definitely feel like you guys have made some great changes um over the last few weeks. And I love the design and love the net zero model. I think we're getting, you know, it's hard not to get sucked into. How many bedrooms is the right number of bedrooms because? We need housing, we need people, you know, every. We're trying to. Put um, you know, the missing middle, give the missing middle a space, but. I really think we should focus on livability. So I would really love you guys to. Just make sure that you are considering that when you're looking at these units. I, you know, not just the price point for the garages stacked like that, but that's a real burden for people who are working late and working early. Everybody's moving cars all the time. I know it's done. I talked to a friend at Wintergreen because when I first saw this, I was. Super concerned and she said, yeah, the first year. You just can't, you know, quite negotiate it and it does get easier and easier. So I understand that it gets done, but. You know, that's just one of the things that I think we need to be considering. Is like. The, I was looking at the sizes of the Lincoln Park homes are actually much bigger than these. These are going to be pretty small units. And I'm very um concerned about like living spaces. I mean, sure, can you put four bedrooms into a nineteen hundred square foot house? You can. But then can that family, you know, we're inside a lot. We have a very long winter here. Can, does that family have any space to hang out? Or it's just bedrooms and a kitchen and the tiny little living room, you know? We had a four bedroom in Wellington and I do think it was like sixteen hundred square feet, which is considerably smaller, but. Um, the lit, our biggest complaint, well, our two biggest complaints is there was no mudroom. Which I think all homes in Summit County should have a mudroom. And our second one was that the living room was way too small to have the whole family sit in. So I really, when you guys are considering these, like the four bedrooms for the homes. Like, that's great to have a four bedroom, but not if the family doesn't want to stay there because it's too small, you know? So I really, I think we need to consider some of those questions, just like zoom out a little bit and say like, is this? Going to function? Is it going to be the the best thing for the families? I think one of the things that everyone who lives in a duplex in Wellington. Really appreciates is that they're not facing the same direction. I understand we have to do that here, but I would love. For you guys to divide, like the porches with those open, I mean, you're just going to be sitting next to your neighbor. You're going to be forced to talk to them, which is. So often fine and wonderful in these neighborhoods, but sometimes you want to go out and have a cup of coffee at seven o'clock and not watch your neighbor's kids play. You know, so having some sort of privacy, even if it's just on that. A solid on, you know, on the porch on that one side or making sure that. The sides yards function as their own space, I think is super important. My last point, because I know I'm getting really detailed, but this one just really bothers me. I think I'm with um Jeffrey. Which shocks me as well, but um. The traffic calming on this loop. So when we lived in the Wellington neighborhood, we could never keep our kids on the green. They did not want to play in the green space. They always wanted to be on the road. So I don't see the road as a problem, except that Rick and Shannon don't want kids playing in the road. So I think somehow we need to really work on traffic calming, visibility. Oh, another, there's another person in the audience.
What's the connection there?
Really doesn't want kids playing in the road either. But so, like, this needs to be designed from day one instead of trying to figure it out and retrofit. Like how, where are kids going to play? I think they are going to gravitate to the road. So how are we going to work that? And um, and you know, it's on a curve and so visibility is not going to be perfect. I know it's. You know, not, it's not like there's no visibility, but. I do think we need to think about this early on in the process. But I'm very excited and I see this as. A small extension of Wellington and Lincoln Park, which I would like. Everyone in this community to be able to live in that type of a community environment. And I don't, you know, I know that. I came to lots of meetings when Lincoln Park was being built and we were super concerned that it was so many people in such a small place and doubling the Wellington and. It's been nothing but wonderful. So I think that this has the potential to be that as well.
Right. Um. Look, first of all, I think we're making a huge mistake now master planning this whole area because. We're not saying okay to a hundred and seventy eight homes. We're saying okay to two hundred plus homes. Because whatever that next phase is that we're not even thinking about right now. I mean, number one, it it, the road's going to go through the parking. That is the parking for this. Development and we're not even considering that while we talk about this. And that is a massive mistake we're making. This needs to be master planned all the way out. I will say, I think six, the sixty three units is too many. I mean, at the last meeting, I thought forty was the number. I still think sixty three is the number. And listen, if we weren't talking about affordable housing, if we were talking about. This being a market driven. Project, all the things that the council has said. We would, the planning commission, when I served on planning commission, would say too much stuff in the bag. Because there's not enough parking. We are making the same mistake we made in the Wellington with parking right now. We are tragically underparked, even though every one of us knows. That every bedroom will have a car. At some point, I mean, Dick knows he's got kids every, the the, this does not work in its current rendition. For the future. It might work out of the gate. Sure, everybody wants to buy stuff today. That's today. I don't, you can't, you know, you look twenty years into the future. I think it's underparked as far as garage space goes like, like Todd is referring to. So for me, it's not working. I'm not a huge fan of the of the massive amount of duplexes either. I know it serves. I I know it serves part of the purpose, but. You know, early on in the Wellington, those first duplexes, and I know things have. You know. That sort of mentality in these neighborhoods changed. The duplexes were such an issue for the town in the first rendition of the Wellington. People were so annoyed about just the sound through the walls and they, we had trouble. I don't know if, am I making this up, Lori, or we had trouble with people that just didn't like it. Then some of them were, we had trouble selling some of them. So now all of a sudden, the duplex is a great thing because we have a crisis. I I don't know if that's. I don't know if this is a sustainable model into the future. So that, that piece worries me. Town homes are sort of a different story, but like you said, the side by side, you know, I don't know if they need to be. I don't need to, needn't, you know, they need to be off each other or what, but I just, I would not vote yes for this right now. I wouldn't vote yes to. For seven million bucks. I know we have a crisis, but the crisis cannot drive. What I don't think is correct for the neighborhood. Um, I also would like to, I I'm really curious. What having offset roads does. So your kid on a bike, you're driving from the bike park now. You know, now you gotta, you're going to have a road on your left. And then you go a little farther. You got a road on your life as as opposed to those, the roads and the alleys all being in sync. I don't. Maybe there is no issue. But it seems like that creates some kind of traffic problem. Not having them lined up. Maybe it doesn't. Maybe I, maybe it doesn't, but I I just want to throw that out. And. You know, finally, I mean, we can, we can talk about how this is great because it's near the bus and people can walk. But I will tell you that I stand at the bus stop on Wellington Road almost every day. And every car that drives by me, and there are a lot, are one person in a car and there are hundreds of them. That's just. Sure, the buses are, there are people that ride the bus. We have a very robust bus system, but there are a ton of people that still drive because they have other stuff to do. The majority of these people will drive to work. So there will be three hundred more cars. At some point on the road because, or a hundred, a hundred and se- let's call it a hundred and seventy five cars um on the road. So I, I think it's too big. And uh. I do think we need a better look at a master plan first. Parking's got to be done correctly from the get go. We have talked for years now. About the fact that how can we add parking to the Wellington? We can't. It's too late. This is the time to get that done. I agree with uh Jay's comment about a little more. A little more um green space. It doesn't have to be green, though, just open. And then um. I think Todd's right on with. Trying to figure out some alternative trails that you can't really get from lot ten or the. You can't get from the number ten house. Anywhere really, because that's the bike park. That's not the Wellington Trail. Wellington Trail is farther down the map. It's it's straight down. To get from there to the Wellington Trail is quite, it's a hall. That's bike park and you can't go through the bike park. So BOSAC needs to think of a way to get a loop from there. There's got to be a dog walking loop some somehow to solve for that, but that sort of gets the whole master plan discussion on. We really need to plan the whole thing. Before we. Do a piece. And then a piece. And then when we do the next piece, these people are going to be pissed because we're building more housing. And then those people are going to be pissed when we build more housing. It it's got to all be done, at least, at least visualized um at once. So. That's. All I have to say.
Who would master plan it?
We do. Well, yeah, no, I mean, we would hire you, the north, Ryan or Suzanne would do it as. As part of the deal to, you know, I mean, and she's already done part of it. But, but here, so. So here's a master plan. We're talking about having several extra parking spaces right now. But now we're going to put a road through those seven extra parking spaces. So right here.
Yeah.
That's where that extra parking is and then we're going to run, that'll be the road then. So is that what we want? I mean, does that?
Back access.
Right.
Main access would be uh below the.
Right. So is that what we want, though? I mean, is, or do we just want the the lower access and not having this? Really shot out, I think. You know, potentially gives us hang up later where when the next council's the, looking at the next days, they say. I don't know why these guys didn't think of that last time we were looking at this.
Be interesting to.
Here I struggle with this and looking because I I'm not sure if you were to add. The seven of you, I mean, if we do a master plan that you're going to approve on this thing. I'm not sure you're even going to plan the lower level because. I mean, we're already struggling with how many units are we having here? Do we have? Do we have people to say, we want future development there, because everybody said, you know, the, the point was, let's just do this. And maybe, you know, who knows, well, we'll feel like ten years or fifteen years down the road.
Not sure I want this here.
Oh, and so I mean-
Let alone that another development.
Not sure how far we go with the master plan on this thing.
That would be memorializing public works, and then that's a discussion for us. Do we wanna plan for more housing? Or is this development doesn't have enough green space, trails apart?
Well, we could, we could, you know, we could put it in, in to BOSAC, we could put it in as open space, and a designated open space. You know, for me, the, the concern is all, all this program. And, and, you know, I, I don't, I don't want, you know, the Ruby administration to, uh, you know, wanna put up a-
I trust Ruby.
Partner buildings, you know, but you said something, Eric, you said, you know, I don't think I'd vote for this right now. I don't, I mean, would anybody vote for this? I mean, we all have concerns, so, so.
I would vote to move it forward right now.
Yeah, I think what we're talking about now is, are we voting to move it forward or not?
Right, and I am a no, because I, it's, it's too much for me.
And that's where I'm getting conflicting, like, because do we come, are we coming back to you, you know, next month? With, uh, you know, tweaking, starting to make tweaks to this? Versus are we coming back to you because, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna master plan that as, as developing, you know, bubble drawings and master plan this thing, which then backs everything else up a little bit? Or are we focusing on this development and getting it to the point where we wanna go with this?
I think we should ignore the fact that topographically this works.
Correct.
It's, I mean, it's not like we just put a blob on a paper, like, they are using the space that with the topography that's out there today works. I mean, she's right, it is a drop-off on the other side of that. So it's not like we either, we could have this big beautiful grid system, or we get this. I mean, this is what it is, and then we'll do something else down there. And it doesn't have to be a road through this development, we can do the other road. I mean, I know we have to have the dual access for, you know, fire concerns and things like that, but, I mean, that road doesn't have to be open. It could be, we talked about this with Bridge Street. That could be a emergency access only. We don't have to encourage people to use that as a thoroughfare. My point is, that doesn't matter. My point is that, you know, I feel like we can trust that they looked at the space and didn't say like, ooh, what I wanna do here is a rounded road. They said like, what does this area, how should we-
That's not what I'm getting at, though. I can swallow these sixty units easier if I know there's not forty more to come. That's why we need a master plan, because I, I wanna know what, what's the vision for next? I mean, what, there's a huge difference there if we're gonna add a bunch more units in a second phase.
But reality is, as we've seen with McCain, we can master plan all day long, and the next council can change it.
That's fine. At least that thought is going forward. This is what the last council thought was, was important for the community.
So are you hoping that where those black lines are, that's the phase two, we would put open space or something else?
Public Works.
Public Works, James? Gets everything he ever wanted.
We got one boat.
Huge snow storage area, so, you know, I mean, that, that is the snow storage for a good portion of town. And something you have to think about is, if this isn't snow storage, every, all the snow from this end of town now goes all the way down to the highway and all the way out to McCain. That's why a master plan is important, because we need to have those discussions about the sustainability of driving trucks all the way out to the McCain property, as opposed to having an in-town site, and what does that do to this? So in a bubble, this looks great because it's on a ledge, but the reality is, right below it is where we put all the snow. And is that gonna continue when that housing is here? Well, we don't know, because we don't know what we're gonna do with it. So that's what I'm getting at, not-
What do you think comfortable carrying capacity on this lot would be?
I thought like last time, I thought forty houses, less duplexes, more single family. Honestly, and maybe it's just part of, what's stuck in my brain is, as we're going forward with for sale, I would like to see more single family for sale is what I would like to see. Original, you know, some of the stuff that we had in the original Wellington, that is obviously very successful. That is what I would rather see, personally.
Yeah. Said, though, you know, Lori brought it up, that when we built Valley Brook, there was a lot of hesitation that that would never get sold, that there would never be an appetite for a triplex or a quadplex. And they'll line up the door for it.
I'm not talking about sales, Jay. I'm not talking about sales, I'm talking about livability in the neighborhood and how houses are spread out. This is a super intense use of this, of this area. It's just super intense, because it's all duplexes and, and townhomes.
And I agree completely with Eric with the master plan, thinking ahead strategically with all our land, snow storage, like, I would love the master plan process before going on. I mean, in Kelly's comments, she had excellent points about square footage, livability, like, can people make this their long-term home? We don't have that level of detail yet to talk about that. But back to the high level, I think a master plan is the way to go.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not worried about these things selling, honestly. I think in the current environment, you could really, any, any unit mix you do will, will sell currently. How's that look twenty years from now? Is that, you know, is that the, is that the mix that's gonna work for the community then?
Well, yeah, I mean, they're saying Colorado Springs is gonna be the biggest city in the state, you know? They're, we're the closest resort to them. I, I, I unfortunately, or fortunately, however you look at it, our community has changed since the beginning of the Wellington, and, and I don't disagree with you. Yeah, this would be fabulous if we could make it all single-family homes. We don't have enough land. So i- it's a question of livability and ability to live here. And, and I think we're, this crisis is created because we don't have enough ability to live here to, to, uh, run the community. And I, I don't, you know, I, I think it's very sustainable personally, because I see our, our community driven by the rest of the state. It, it's gonna continue to grow. We are who we are. You know, we're right next to I-70, we're closest resort to, to Colorado Springs. And, um, you know, I think this is some very quality of life as demonstrated by Valley Brook. There, there's, there's, this is a quali- this is a good quality, um, project for locals to have the opportunity to buy and own their own home. And, uh, a- again, like I said before, is it perfect? We, 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 we just can't create perfect at this point, so.
No, but we can do better.
I do agree with Eric. When it comes to the synchrony of the streets and the parking, I absolutely agree with Eric and the fact that I think that is some direction to take back, to try to figure out a way to park it better and to provide some more synchrony with the streets of not, you know, and, and looking at that and making sure it is, it is adjusted correctly and that it's set up the right way. Um, because I do think those are two ve- very valid points that I wholeheartedly agree with. And I think it's hard sometimes to figure out what to take from the conversations that happen. But I'm pretty sure that everyone here would agree that, you know, the parking, uh, and, you know, setup is something that could use a little, uh, little work and, and, and more thoughtfulness, maybe some brainstorming.
Your point, I, I mean, I think it can be better, and I agree with that. It's, which is why, it can't be better unless we choose to move it forward, you know, so that's kind of-
We're moving it forward, we're not signing off, though.
At some point, you're signing off, though, because we can't keep doing, and we're putting a tremendous amount of work and time into a project that we plan to build. And so at some point, we, you know, we've gotta, um, we, we, we're pulling the trigger on this thing. So here's what I would suggest, a- and I think if we, if we target the next meeting, and we come back and maybe you look at some of the things you're hearing tonight, and we say, but we come back and we start off, let's, 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 let's actually master plan it. Let's ask, this is the group setting here in front of us, how do you wanna see this? May, if this is all you wanna see, what's the maximum number of units? Do you even wanna consider development on that lower level? Let's decide and look at that and answer those questions. Let's have some better data in front of us relative to square footage. Let's look at some of those, maybe potentially some of those garage questions. I would like to study the alignment of those alleys a little more. I'm not sure what, from a safety standpoint, if that is the right thing, and I'd like to have us talk internally on that, because that really concerns me if there's stray shots across there. Yeah. Yeah, cuz we, I mean, we saw what happened when when they continue an alley and across the road, so, uh, anyways. Uh, I think, you know, let's come back, let's take, and then I think then we gotta be able, then we gotta be in a place where we're gonna, you know, would I love to see seven oh on this, right? This is a big deal. We do a lot of exciting housing stuff, and I think we all get a lot of momentum behind this thing and, but, I mean, there, you know, there's some people that are raising some points, and let's spend one more meeting and try to address some of those things and. Hey, Rick, do we do a little poll right now as to if, yeah, I mean, it sounds like we're headed towards the, they, they master planning process of some kind. And do we do a quick poll on what, do, do we, what does council think? Are they in favor of master planning it as a second phase of the development? Or master planning it as open space slash public works?
Done, yeah.
I mean, do we just go down the line and get a, get people's thoughts?
Yeah, I, I would love to see it be housing on that second tier. Um, I'd be fine. I, I like the idea of master planning. I think it'd be thoughtful to roll in some high-level block eleven concepts and of like, what do we think in there from bedroom count, you know, unit count on block eleven, like, how many acres are there? What do we think in there? Just conceptually, so we can kinda see what our overall mix is, right? Like, as a community, and, cuz that's gonna have an impact and shape things. Um, but I, to me, Wellington, Lincoln Park, the stables, and then that lower parcel, that, that is the best neighborhood in Summit County. It is that whole zone down, you know, as you're going towards seven eleven. It is Main Street out the front door, ski area out the front door, French culture out the back. It, like, the magic of this place is the people in the community. And I think adding housing on that lower level only strengthens our community. So I would love, I'm cool master planning it. Would love to see housing similar to what we're doing here. Um, so yeah, that's my two cents.
I'm, I'm cool with master planning, I think, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sold on the need to master plan. I, I'm not quite as strong on phase two. I, I hear Carol loud and clear, we, we need snow storage on this side of town. I'm driving all of our snow over to McCain, I'm concerned with, so I'd like to hear solutions to that, if we're gonna go down a phase two. But I, you know, I think we've taken a lot away from James over, just since I've been on council and, uh, so I'm, I'm open to just calling it open space slash public works for now. I mean, we all know that, you know, two years, four years, six years, another council can come in and change what we've done. But, uh, for now, I'm comfortable, um, having the, the lower part be, remain open space slash public works.
Um, I think a walkthrough would help a lot, because I think there's still a ton of space, even with this lower tier phase two for James to put snow. There's, it appears there's, I mean, I don't know exa- I can't tell exactly what's between the stables lot and where the snow storage and camper storage is.
There you are right there.
Yeah, so how far down does that phase two go? Yeah, I understand that. And then can you, can you trace the whole boundary?
If you, um, if you see those two lines where it says potential future nineteen lots,
Yeah.
that area there is the space underneath the utility, the power lines. So that is area that you could snow stack in.
Yeah, so it, yeah, so I mean, I just, I think there's-
In that zone? Interesting. Can you dump snow there?
If you go back to that other slide, um, you can see we kept the whole phase two above that.
Yep, cool, thank you.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess that this just says that we should, I guess, master plan it, because it's hard for me to tell. It seems like there's enough space for all of these uses, and then there's a solar garden out there that's eventually going to be, um, you know, have lived its life, and hopefully all those solar are on people's houses, because why use the land that way? But.
Because for places like the historic district, that's where you want solar, not on their houses, changing the pitch of the roofs.
I'd rather have it in Park County with a dirt, two thousand bucks an acre, not two million.
Anyway, I'm just saying, I feel like the tricky thing about talking about way down the, um, you know, phase two is that it feels a little bit far out to me to be talking about phase two. I mean, we have an entire another parcel that is a higher priority than this. So for me, that it just feels like forcing us to make a decision with very little information, um, but I mean, I support this project and I'd like to see it move forward, and I think phase two is um, probably also in the cards, but if, if it's better to fate, to look at everything, master plan. I'm usually a master plan kind of type of person, but I have to say, I feel like this is too far in the future to master plan. That's my only feeling of it.
Yeah, I'm not even sure I want this. I don't want anything more. You know, I, I, um, yeah, I, I think, I think this is gonna stress our infrastructure. Um, and, and I would definitely codify it as, uh, af- you know, even, and if we could shrink this, this would be cool, but if, whatever, if you guys are all into this, as is, and with the tweaks and the parking and all that stuff, I, I just soon somehow send a message to future councils that we looked at this prop- the property, and we think this, this is as much as it will hold while maintaining the quality of life in the open space. I mean, you know, we, we're not gonna build our way out of housing. Well, you know, when we, when we have built hot, when we have enough, you know, build this housing and other housing, we're still gonna need more housing. It's gonna be, it's like Malthusium's dilemma, there's always gonna be more, a need. And, and I just, there's a quite, certain amount, a finite amount of how much, how many bodies this valley can sustain. So, uh, uh, yeah, I mean, granted, they can, they can overrule what we do, but I'd, I'd like to just make it clear that open space and, and, you know, public works and all that stuff, uh, it has, has a home, and the thought of driving snow trucks down towards McCain, you know, I'm not into it. So, yeah, I'd, I'd master plan the heck out of this before we, before we moved on.
Yeah, I love the master plan route, so we can be more strategic, and I prioritize public works, open space, and maybe consider more if there's space, but definitely prioritizing open space and public works in the master plan.
I have nothing to add, but.
We, if this goes forward as is, we need to do something below it, though. For the people that live in this neighborhood, because you really just don't wanna be looking down at that. It's not, it's not that, I mean, it's
Like aesthetic.
Aesthetically, I mean, there, there's gotta be some buffer along, you know, I'm all for making it snow storage and open space. There has to be some green space down there that stays permanently green space, or, or part of it has to be treed. Because if you live in any of these units and your view is down, you know, it's nice when there's snow there, but when it melts and it's all the trash before they go in to pick it up. Now, that, that is a, I mean, it's a dust bowl in the summer, and it's, it's not the best view. So if we want the people that live here to have a non-industrial neighborhood, I think we need to plan to do something down there as part of whatever we do here. That's all I would say. We can go over there and stand and look in, and I'll show you.
We will, uh, you guys wanna do anything out on site prior to the meeting? You wanna try to do something that day? Maybe we don't, I don't, I mean, maybe instead of in the morning. We have the grant deal we have to do at the start. Usually we do that at two thirty. Um, I believe, are we doing two thirty? And so, um, I can't, um, I'm not sure what the agenda looks like, but, you know, it'll take a little time for us to do, um, some of this stuff. So we might wanna sched- maybe we could try to schedule something during that day, prior to the meeting.
I think we should.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's important.
So we could just all meet out there.
Or do we wanna try to walk it sooner so that Suzanne has a little more time to 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 work on it?
Well, yeah, but I mean, what do you, I guess, seven people out there giving.
Yeah, the holidays make it.
Rick, why don't you think about it and schedule it or just?
We'll figure out what that looks like.
All right, good, thanks. Those are your confusing messages for the day.
What do we do?
That's how we roll. Um, still some land use guidelines?
Good afternoon.
Hey Trucks, how are you?
Great, you guys?
Yeah.
Spirited discussions.
He's gonna talk about stables.
The best ones.
Um, so this may be a little early to jump into this at this point. Did want to point out, I think, as my memo does, that. Um, right now, the lugs don't line up with what we're talking about in terms of development there. And in fact, if we went through the process, uh, doing a master plan review. Um, you know, we'd we'd find that it's inconsistent, get a lot of negative points for density and. Half of it's in land use district one, which doesn't allow density to be transferred into it. So it basically fail a policy of our code. You guys can always override that cuz it would go through as a town project. But I know it's always been the desire of the council to reach a passing analysis on these things. So um, our thought is, is we get this a little further defined, probably wanna do an amendment to the lugs. We need to do that upfront before the master plan process. So that's something that we need to do. Two readings, we have to have a a gap of one meeting in between because of noticing requirements. So it's something we need to initiate fairly soon. And it does relate to timing on the overall project. Because um, the hope is that they could be breaking ground and starting on units and, you know, by by September. So anyway, um. Hey, if you have any thoughts on this right now, that's great, but we can certainly come back and talk more about it. Uh, I'm kind of sensing if, you know, if the council agrees, we've got a majority of the council saying, let's definitely move forward with this project. Then we would come in for like a first reading um, on lug amendments. Um, which recognizing the density that's been discussed here. Does that sound good?
Uh, any questions from Eric on this? What what is um? What is land use? What is sixteen compared to what you're proposing?
Sixteen Wellington?
Yeah.
Yeah, so sixteen's, uh, it's it's quite a bit less, Eric. I think it's like four U P A, if I'm not mistaken, because it takes in the entire site. So all the open space tracks that are part of Wellington are included in there. You know, if you just, I think, like we've talked about before, if you just. Um, narrow down to the developed portions of Wellington, you know, it's probably much higher density, like seven U P A or something like that.
That that could change if that master plan included that area that was undeveloped at the bottom. And you included that as open space, right? That could, that might get you to a similar.
Right.
I mean, that's basically what happened for Wellington is that big park at the front or park, that big wasteland of the front.
With a dead elk. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, um, then I guess we can roll into Cliff's gonna come up and give me a hand if.
Always bringing Cliff for the hard hitting.
Uh, do we have that?
We got it up so we can toggle through it. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't you give Cliff like an award last time he was here?
We should have.
Oh, then we said no.
He gets all the fun stuff.
He does, he gets the good, he gets the good stuff. What was the last one he did? What were you here for last?
You're a master sign plan?
It was solid, too.
Yeah, yeah. Another.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Calvin debacle.
So I wanna recognize Cliff. Uh, Cliff along with Steffi from our office, they had to do a lot of heavy lifting over the last few months. Um, you know, for two years, it was kind of a free for all in terms of signage uh, with the COVID understandably. But trying to rein that back in this year was not, not a pleasant task. Um, Cliff has been super systematic about it, coming out with reports every week. And um, you know, we've, he's talked to hundreds of business owners. Um, trying to get things back, you know, to the code that we have today. Obviously, now we're talking about, you know, are there some changes or? But what I wanted to do was kind of take you through um, just a little bit back through history here. To uh, talk a little bit about how the sandwich board signs, cuz we had this discussion not too long ago. So um, well, about seven years ago with the a previous council and obviously got a new one now. But um, let's see, how do I, there we go.
Yep.
Okay, this is in our sign code and obviously it's a the intent of this uh, sign code to kind of provide some ordliness to the town. And not what you see in the other. I've got some other great pictures later on, hopefully to add a little.
The same. Can you?
Go back.
You need to double up on the cheaters?
Yeah, so I, uh, you know, these are some of the reasons that we want to, you know, you know. Taking an overall approach to signage, having something that's provides good communication, but avoids clutter. Um, and pedestrian safety is obviously another. Uh, you know, our historic district, you know, obviously it's important to us. There's a lot of things that we've done and some of these slides were from a presentation did a few years ago. But like, um, you know, street furniture, you know, having uniform looking things that add to the, you know, attractiveness of the town. And don't detract from it, you know, we've got wayfinding that we put in everywhere. Also, you know, um, that helps people get around but looks good. Public arts, another piece of that. So there's a lot of things that we piece together to, you know, make town cohesive downtown and attractive. Um, and then, you know, our signs that we allow. It's really the kind of wood grain or something that simulates that that are really pretty attractive. And, you know, a lot of these are done by house signs. Um, they do a great job. Um, we've got a great relationship with them. They know how our code works. And so every, you know, every business gets to have a sign like this. Um, and so it's really, um, I think our code has worked well that way. Um, you know, when we start talking about sandwich boards, though, we start getting into some of the issues. That uh, you know, get into that clutter and that and, you know, we list these in the memo, you know. One is, you know, the idea of, you know, sandwich boards getting in the way potentially with snow removal. We've already got really narrow sidewalks compared to a lot of communities. So that's another impediment kind of to pedestrians. ADA compliance is another thing that we shouldn't forget about in this whole discussion. Uh, clutter and then sign proliferation. This was an issue that, you know, the planning commission brought up a number of years ago. Is um, if we allow sandwich board signs. It could be an arms race, almost like everyone feels they need to have one. You know, cuz he's got one, I need one, you know, to keep up with it and all that. So um, we took, so as my memo outlines, we took this to a. A few years ago, we actually had an advisory group. It was a sustainable B R C business task force. We, they had worked on some issues related to sustainable B R C, including like the disposable bag fee, that type of thing. And then we um, used them for some other purposes and this was one of them to get some feedback on that. They did make some recommendations on some limited use of of sandwich boards. However, then when it went to the planning commission, the planning commission was really strong that they had concerns with it. That was related to the council. It had to do with aesthetics, clutter, the armed race idea, things like that. And so as a result, when it went to the council, the council finally decided, we're not gonna change the rules. We still are gonna prohibit sandwich boards in the future. However, there are, there was a few things that the council did do at that point in time. And one of those was um, to allow those window wrap signs. That's where you have that kind of uniform, like ribbon going across a business. Um, craniology has one, there's a bunch of them in town. It it looks good on a window as compared to just. Gets thrown up on windows all the time. So that was one of the allowances that council made working with us. We had actually had a subcommittee of several members of the council worked with us, uh, with us on that. Also, um, directory signs, which I'll get to in a minute, um, just show any picture of. But anyway, the idea with directory signs was we we can, we can make some more space available for businesses. Beyond just the sign that's on their property. And so back before that point in time, if you wanted square footage for a directory sign out front for your business. On that directory sign, which may be for ten or fifteen businesses, you had to use part of your allocation from your property, your business. Um, we gave a separate allocation at that point in time and said, okay, you can still max out your sign that you're allowed for your business. But then you can also get an additional allowance for the directory sign out front. So those are a couple of things that we did back then to try to address some of these issues that, uh, you know, obviously some people. You know, some folks that don't have as much um, direct presence on Main Street, you know, they're concerned about visibility. And that's why we see these signs popping up, you know, is cuz they're trying to attract people um, to them. The one thing we found, I think I mentioned in the memo, is there's, um, Cliff took a look and there's like. Eighty businesses that are not directly on Main Street, just on South Main, if you include Los Sima. And we're not even talking about Main Street Station and um, the Village. But there's like eighty businesses that are set back, they're not directly on Main Street. So if we were to allow some kind of um, exception for sandwich board signs, it's going to, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of businesses. That are um, in that camp. I just wanted to put some levity in here. Here's a sign code gone bad. Gatlinburg. Dukes of Hazzard, right? He's got his go karts and whatever else, uh, pigeon forge and other, we just, we pulled these out. We had these for years, but um, closer to home, here's Keystone. Cliff was going through Keystone the other day and it's actually a couple of pictures put together, but they're all different sandwich board signs.
This year?
Um, brightest Keystone to open, opening weekend. Um, in these three photos, I think I can count fourteen sandwich board signs. Um, from Pizza on the Run to the Last Shop in the the River Run area.
It's great, like the Wild West.
So um, and this is River Run and this is obviously much, much wider sidewalks than we have. But you can kind of see how the the clutters form there as well. So um, these are examples of directory signs. Probably on the right there for Fiesta Jalisco and those ones right there are getting close to our three square foot maximum. That we allow for them right now. I mean, that's certainly something we could discuss if we wanted to even increase that. But that's a pretty good size sign. If you go on the other side, old um, South Main, the shops at Old South Main there. It's it's a nice looking, I think, attractive sign. They're relatively small, the actual individual businesses on there. So they could, they could have a much, a lot more square, not a lot more, they could have more square footage than um, they do right now. If you just compare those two kind of side by side. I think directory signs are an opportunity to have more visibility out by Main Street, by the sidewalk. Um, and then the other thing that um, we do allow for, and this is more just for restaurants and bars. Is these display boxes, which you can put your menu in it and other things about your business. Um, mainly about food and drink, that type of thing, but here's some examples of those as well. So that's an additional allowance people are provided that have like a restaurant bar type of of situation. So that's kind of the overview, um, where we've been and kind of some of the issues. But we'd love to hear your guys' thoughts at this point.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions first?
I've got one. Mark, thanks. Uh, this is really useful in talking to citizens out there that have had some heartburn over this. And uh, really appreciate, and I know you put a lot of time into this, so thanks. Um, the directory signs, like the shops at on Main Street there could. To increase the size of the individual shop signs, if if it's warranted by the number of shops in the alley. Could they have two directory signs? Or is it limited to one? Because at some point, that thing's gonna get too big.
Oh, so we allow for another directory sign, yeah, exactly.
So they could have two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so the businesses all can kind of max out that three square feet.
Looking at that, they could almost double their individual signs and that for that particular example.
Right, yeah.
Good to know, thanks.
Yeah.
Other questions? Let's start with some guidance. I know you and I have talked about this quite a bit. Todd, you wanna start or?
Yeah, I'll jump in. Um, I'm not inclined to increase the use of sandwich boards. I like the current system that is in place, right, with those directories. And I think if businesses maximize those, that would, I think it's important to keep that character and not look like River Run. Um, and like, I I agree with you, Mark, I think it's gonna open up the wild, wild west. And, you know, we we had this discussion at Bosak where there's some work that needs to be done and cleaning up the signs at trails. I, you know, was gonna shoot some pictures um, at the letting of B R C. And it's funny looking at all this, the street signs there, there's there's a sign on every one. So I I think we can do better in a couple of other areas as well, as far as reducing the amount of sign clutter. And just kind of having it be a little more natural. So I'm not inclined to expand usage of sa- uh, sandwich boards.
I'm in agreement. I'm the one that wanted to look at this, just based on the several citizens coming to me. And and after we've looked at it and the report, reading the report and seeing the presentation. I I may encourage us to to do a um, educational tour for some of the folks that are having a lot of heartburn. And really with the focus on on those directory signs and really help them understand what what is available to them. And those directory signs, as well as the the window signage, you know, the limited window signage that, you know, the concessions we made last time. And cuz I think they are significant. I think they can help some of these businesses. And uh, so I think what's come out of this for me is is, you know, I'm 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 with you, you with staff. I I do not see a lot of changes that makes sense, but I, other than more education. And and help these businesses understand what they can do to help them be more successful.
Yeah, the educational tour sounds great. And Mark, thanks for including in here about the Sustainable B R C Business Task Force. Because, I mean, this is not my area of expertise. And I feel like if, you know, their surrounding businesses are able to come and look at this rigorously. And say, you know, give some recommendations for improvements, but not allow the sandwich boards, then I'm gonna rely on that information.
Jay?
You know, I think that uh, a couple of things come to mind with like, you know, uh, the getting the toothpaste back in the tube. And, you know, how uh, a lot of this was, had very good intentions. And uh, and unfortunately for you guys directly, no good deed goes unpunished. And um, but at the same time, I do think that um, there is a real threat to sign pollution. By loosening the code and, you know, I've heard Eric talk about it on the trails. And I, you know, I think it's important to look at that in our town and in the core. And uh, yeah, I guess the only thing I would have to add is. For us to look at ourselves in the same light as we look at other businesses and where we have sandwich board signs. Uh, where we have unnecessary um, signage that we reflect on that as well. Because I think that as a town, there's ness- there's times that we necessarily have to put up. Whether it's no parking or handicapped or this or that. And and we just keep piling on where perhaps there is a. And, and we just keep piling on where perhaps there is a opportunity to clean up what we're doing as well and make it more streamlined and have less clutter on a, on a town so that we could be the good stewards and leaders for our business community and that we kind of follow our own guidance.
Carol?
Well, Jay, I have nothing to add. Thank you for the thorough vetting.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yeah, I, I think we alert the, alert the businesses with the possibility of directional signs. I agree with Jay. You know, I kind of was, was kind of coming in here, I think being a little bit more sympathetic to sandwich boards. But then I, I saw those photos of, of Keystone and Kootas. I'm a little bit more reticent to kind of change the Feng Shui of, of Main Street. And also the ADA issue is, is a big thing. So, yeah.
I, it's, I know this is a difficult topic, you know. I would be okay with doing some increases to directory sign sizing or even some normal size signage. But it'd have to be permanent in nature, like the, like the window wraps. The sandwich boards just by default, I mean, you can talk to one merchant that does a really nice sandwich board that is not really offensive, but then the next guy's is in terrible shape because it's been hit by the plow and it's been snowing or raining. So you can't even read it, yet they consistently put it out. So it is very hard to, you have to, you have to treat everybody equally. It's really where we, you have to do that under the sign code. And it gets to Jay's point. We have to treat ourselves the same way and our parking partner in particular has to follow this also. Those things that are more permanent nature, I think are way better than these ones that are very temporary in nature and, and easily destroyed. So thanks for putting this together.
In this area too, in towns.
Same, same. Anywhere they're in our realm, it's the same thing. You know, just like the sign code we looked at for them, same deal. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the hard work. We have one last thing, reappointment of Tajah Greer to the Social Equity Advisory Committee.
So Mayor and Council, we've had Tajah on the commission since inception. And as you may remember, we staggered the terms of the new appointees when we started that commission. So we wouldn't have everyone coming on and going off at the same time. Right now Tajah is the only person on the commission that had a two-year term. And so she's the only person up for reappointment. She's done an excellent job. You saw her letter in the package. She's very interested in continuing to stay on and continue this work. She's the commission chair. She does an excellent job. So it is staff's recommendation that we reappoint her for a three-year term.
Fair enough. Everybody good? All right. And with that, we have some time. I need to, I need to run over to the restaurant, which is the only reason I was trying to run out.
Okay, well, let's.
No, no, let's, let's, let's do them. I don't really. Why don't you let, why don't you, you want a break?
Yeah, let Pro Tem know.
Go tell him. See what she's made of. She's already taken a break.
Yeah.
We'll have a break.
You all saw the letter from the commissioner relative to our ask for funding for the pay as you throw. Did you see that?
The letter from whom? I'm sorry.
So I mean, if you're good with that, well, I'll work with Frisco. We'll, we'll reach out. I have a problem asking Dylan Silverthorne in Blue River if they're okay with.
What was the gist of it?
Just, they felt that.
Strong Futures money.
Yeah, that it should be a countywide use of those funds. So if the other communities are okay with them giving us some money to help promote what we're doing as pay as you throw, we needed to get kind of a, the blessing from Silverthorne and Dylan.
So all of a sudden, any money that the county spends, everybody's got to agree on it, I guess. So I don't know if this is a new, this is a new philosophy now. So, you know, we may, we can say no to how the bus money is spent. I mean,
But we'll ask. Okay.
Cool. All right. Put Kelly in charge. I don't blame you.
Not like the old.
Like to add a proclamation for the Free Ride Transit Service. As item number three, after we do the community.
With that segue, we move on to community, community leadership award. So. Couple of years ago, we started to recognize members of the community that have. Done something special, recognize. Long-term leadership or you know, special occasions. Our first one was Dave Pringle. Our third, second, our third, our second one was Turk Monapart and our third. Is to the Director of Public Health for Summit County, Amy Weinland. And by extension, her team, I saw it hand her shot and I don't like to upset him because he checks on restaurants. So. I don't know how many of you know Amy or what she does for a job and hopefully. Before the pandemic and since the pandemic, most of us don't have any really daily interaction. But if you remember back to March. Of 2020, when none of us knew what we were going to do, what was going on? Amy really stepped up and took the lead and I think really led our county. In a really to a much better place than most other counties, not only in Colorado, but in the, in this, in the country. I think we all know what. Where leadership looks like in the face of crisis. And Amy was the absolute opposite of that. She did such a wonderful job with her team. Figuring out stuff that none of us really knew what was going on. I mean, as a council. We weren't having live meetings. We were on Zoom all the time. Amy showed up to a lot of our Zoom meetings, a lot of our. County Zoom meetings, just to sort of talk us off the cliff and. Sort of explain what was going on and use her knowledge to help us figure out how to serve our constituents better. Her and her team, they organized an amazing vaccine system with the bus barns, which was just incredible. I can't imagine how we could have done anything. Better than, than that. And then getting the vaccine bus up here and. She's just did such a wonderful job that we felt that she deserves. This lovely award says Town of Breckenridge Community Leadership Award, Public Health Director. Amy Weinland Summit County Public Health Department. So with that, thank you for everything that you've done. Would you like me in there too?
Make sure Jeff brings.
Yeah, he's kind of like, she's kind of like.
Oh, oh my gosh, um. Much I am. I'm overwhelmed. Eric called me a few weeks ago. And I, and I saw his name pop up in my, in my phone and I. I didn't answer it because I was in a meeting, so I called him afterwards and I was kind of afraid to talk to him. I'm like, okay, what do we? What have we got going on? Is this going to be about fentanyl or what, what is this about? And so he, he let me know that, that. That you were nominating me for this award and. I have to say I'm, I'm just overwhelmed with gratitude. It was kind of triggering for me. You're not right because we were beyond the worst of it now, but. Certainly remembering everything that we've gone through was, has been a process, right, to go through. But I, I, I'm overwhelmed with gratitude to receive this award on behalf of Summit County Public Health and. Deeply honored to have my work, our work, it, this, this award belongs to the, the entire team. And thank you to the Town of Rec and the council for recognizing it. It represents countless hours of dedication by our team during the pandemic and it means so much that the work we are passionate about resonates with others. It's impossible to go to experience something of this magnitude and not be changed by it. And there are many lessons we can take away from our collective experience. The lesson that is most meaningful to me is that we truly are stronger together. And the power and commitment of this community is extraordinary. It was incredible to see how the pandemic brought out the best of Summit County. This does not mean we didn't disagree, but we pulled together even when we were physically apart. And, and we did what we needed to do to protect one another. The success of our response was not something I did alone. Or we did alone. And there are many others who deserve recognition for this award and for the success of our response in Summit County. First and foremost, this award belongs to our entire public health team. Several of who are here with me tonight and hopefully others are joining virtually because they weren't able to come this evening. And I just want to recognize them for leading this response with unwavering devotion and integrity. And with whom I am proud to be working alongside each and every day. So thank you for all of your work that you do. I would like to thank the Town of Breckenridge in particular. Who worked with us to navigate the challenges and the council, of course, who worked with us to navigate the challenges of keeping the economy running while supporting the numerous. Response efforts. And with that, of course, the other towns, the commissioners, other elected officials and the business community who did the same. I want to thank the other county departments, especially emergency management. And partnering organization, organizations like FERC, Building Hope. The school district, first responders, and so many others that are too numerous to list here tonight. That pivoted to address the increase, increased needs of families and individuals that were profoundly impacted. And of course, my family, Abigail and Tobias, my kids and my mom and dad. Who were here tonight and for the support and love they, they provided for my work and enduring my time away. And all of the staff away and their families, but for keeping me grounded during the most challenging of times. Thank you for that. The primary reason we are finally able to safely be in person, of course, is because of the development and distribution of vaccines. I would be remiss not to recognize that our success with vaccinating the community would not have been possible without the aid of over 500 volunteers. The majority of whom were members of our, are members of our active retirement community. That helped staff 150 vaccine pods resulting in Summit County having the, one of the highest vaccination rates in the state. It got us out of this hole. I want to emphasize how truly remarkable these vaccines are. For other diseases, vaccine development has taken up to 20 years. Experts initially thought it would take at least 18 months to have a vaccine for COVID. But the science community came together and did it in just 354 days. That is crazy. And to quote Matt Damon's character in the movie, The Martian, we science the, you know what out of this thing. Addition, in addition to these life-saving vaccines, scientists achieved some amazing milestones in the midst of the global pandemic. I was paying attention because I had so much time. One of the most exciting scientific achievements has been NASA's successful landing of the fifth Mars rover. On March 5th, 2020. Before its launch, NASA announced that the rover's name would be Perseverance. Ironically, this was the same day that Colorado state officials announced the first case of COVID. That had been confirmed right here in Summit County. When Perseverance launched that July, it took along two remarkable instruments. A helicopter called Ingenuity, which performed the first ever powered controlled flight on another world. And a gadget called Moxie, which successfully used ingredients from the Martian atmosphere to create breathable oxygen. A test that might pave the way for astronauts to live on the red planet. Perseverance, Ingenuity and Moxie. I can hardly think of better words for the challenge that we had faced. And the fact that we are on the other side of the darkest times of the pandemic is proof that we Summit County have persevered. We have been ingenious. We have Moxie. I have no doubt that our team and myself will harness the wisdom and skills we gained from this response. And be ready to tackle public health challenges in the future and bring about positive change for years to come. Thanks again to the council and the town of Breckenridge for recognizing the work of public health in this community. I am humbled and grateful for the honor and hope this recognition inspires others to work in this field. We have two nurse openings, by the way, in case any of you are interested. And I want everyone to remember to keep washing your hands and stay home when you're sick. And thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Right. Thanks, everybody that showed up for that. Don, it's always good to see you and Dan. Okay, now I have a proclamation for the 25th birthday. Of the Breckenridge Free Ride. If any of you rode today, we're handing out donuts and if you didn't, you should have. It was super fun. Gave away a few prizes. So whereas. Breckenridge Free Ride Transit System was formed and commenced operations in the winter of 1997. And whereas the Breckenridge Free Ride has implemented the use of battery electric buses. Supporting the Town of Breckenridge's Sustainable Rec Plan of 2022. Encouraging the use of public transit and electric vehicles, which will help maintain and improve. The livability and sustainability of the Breckenridge community and whereas. The Breckenridge Free Ride provides transit services to recreation, medical, educational, shopping, dining, affordable housing, residential neighborhoods. Main Street and Town Hall. Plus, the free ride makes it possible to keep cars parked all day. And conveniently gets people wherever they need to go, both free, without fare and with ease. And whereas the Breckenridge Free Ride and its dedicated employees have provided over 15 million passenger trips. Since 1997 and then eliminated over four million pounds of CO2. The community's environment versus personal vehicles used over the last 25 years. And whereas. The Breckenridge Free Ride will continue to provide transit services within the Town of Breckenridge. Continue to count passengers and continue to provide the benefits, such a valuable service to the community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Eric Mamula, do hereby proclaim the day of December 13th. 2022 to be Breckenridge Free Ride Day. Recognize that this date shall serve as the official 25th birthday. For the Breckenridge Free Ride adopted this 13th day of December, 2022. Great job to the transit staff. And the supervisors and everybody that. Everybody that has anything to do with the bus. It's such an amazing service and. You guys deserve all the credit. So thank you. All right, we have communications to counsel. We start with a public comment. This is non-agenda items only. Three-minute time limit, please. Put him right there. If you want to say a few words, just stand up and. Give us your name and say your piece.
My name's Michael Hallivus. I run and own the food cart on, at the village. I came here in 2018. You guys gave me my license. I wanted to comment on the, the signage. The, I came, I came specifically to try and convince you guys that. The village is a bit different to Main Street because it defies. The snow clearing, the disability access, because we, the village has all that. But after, after listening to Cliff. I'm in favor of the directory signage. At the moment, there's no signage at all at the village. And there's two entrances, one from Main Street Station and one from Park Avenue. So I think, I think he's on the right track. And you can, it'll look exactly like the town's supposed to look like. So I'm in favor of it. Hopefully it'll happen quick.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
Mayor.
I knew you were there somewhere. I was looking.
Mr. Mayor Council, thanks for having me. My name is Randy Conley. And I'm the current board chair of Summit Youth Hockey. We're fortunate to have a partner such as the Town of Breckenridge that provides us with a fantastic arena facility. So thank you for your support. Youth hockey helps provide young kids in our community with life skills such as sportsmanship, teamwork. And responsibility and the opportunity to help more local families in these areas is why I'm here tonight. Summit Daily Sports Writer Cody Jones recently wrote an article declaring Breckenridge to be a hockey town. And our registration numbers support that claim. Over the last seven years, our membership has grown by an average of nine percent per year. Taking us from 140 kids to this year's 257 kids playing hockey. Girls hockey continues to be a focus and we even have a specific girls hockey committee on our board. And this year we're able to add another team to our girls program. I mentioned this to thank the Town of Breckenridge for their recently investment in upgraded locker rooms for the indoor rink to specifically support girls hockey. There were, they were well-used this last weekend. We had a Summit Youth Hockey Tournament hosting 16 teams of girls. All under the age of 12 for a tournament this weekend. Much of our growth has been driven by our Free Mites Program for kids under the age of eight, started four years ago. You know, hockey is an expensive sport and Summit Youth runs. Four major fundraising events per year, accounting for about 40% of our annual budget. Additionally, Todd Rankin, Skates Giving Program funded our Free Mites Program this year with a $41,000 donation this fall. So we appreciate that. These events combined with generous Town of Breckenridge operational subsidies to the arena. And ice grants specifically to Summit Youth Hockey helps keep the cost of hockey reasonable for our community. Has allowed our program to grow. This year we had over 100 mites playing hockey. We have projected as the increased numbers of mites move through our system to squirts, pee-wees, and eventually to high school. Our membership will grow to over 400 kids in the next seven years. With beer league hockey games already starting as late as 10:45 at night. Adult hockey drop-in skates have been relegated to starting at 6:30 in the morning. It's easy to see that the current arena infrastructure will not support growth of this kind. We're gonna need more ice eventually. On behalf of Summit Youth Hockey and the entire hockey community, we intend to present a formal proposal, hopefully next spring. To the Town of Breckenridge, requesting the skills pad be built adjacent to the current outdoor ice sheet. Along with upgrades to the outdoor rink and thus provide additional ice availability for all. We're currently consulting with other arena use groups, architects, town staff. And our goal is to propose a solution that does not increase the generous subsidies currently provided by the Town of Breckenridge. And hopefully addresses net zero and carbon neutral type initiatives that are also important to our community. So thank you for your time. Thanks again for supporting Summit Youth Hockey and stay tuned for more.
All right, anyone else? Yes, sir. Yeah, it's been a while.
Hank Scott. I wanted to ask the council to look at the bolt licenses, not, not the money, but how it's assessed. I'm sure I'm not alone here, but I ran out a lock-off basement in my house. I have four bedrooms and a lock-off basement. The way it's currently assessed, I have to pay 750 bucks a year to live in my bedroom. And my kids have to pay 750 bucks. Well, I paid 750 bucks for each of them to live in their bedroom. And I charge like 130 bucks a night for my lock-off basement. So I have to come up with three grand in a couple of weeks' time. And so not. Not opposed to the bolt licensing, the money and what it does, just the way it gets assessed. Airbnb is a hosted activity, so you expect to be a host. I get VRBO is different. You get the whole house. But I know there's other ways to do it. I did a little bit of research on this and. I don't think it's actually in alignment with state law, the way it's currently being, the fee is currently being assessed. So just really wanted to ask the council to look at it. In the way it is currently, I'm sure I'm not the only one in this situation. But I don't mind paying the fee and I'm gonna have to pay it in two weeks' time, but. It's a lot of money for. You know, having to pay to live in my own room. So. That's about it.
Awesome. Hank, thanks. All right, anyone else? All right, that is it for public comment this evening. Breckenridge Creative Arts Quarterly Update.
Good evening, Tamara Nunsachi Park, President and CEO with Breck Create. We are, what a joyful meeting to be a part of today. Amy was, gave my daughter the, her shot. So it was just wonderful to be a part of that celebration and. Celebrate a leader who was on the front lines as much as she was behind the scenes. So thank you, Amy and the entire team. Today we have three quick focus areas for our report. The first is an introduction of our team at Breck Create. The second is a public art update and an approval of potential acquisition to the collection. And third is just a review of our charge as an organization and how we delivered on that purpose over the last year. We started 2022 by revising our organizational strategy away from that destination driving programming. And toward more of that year-round arts activation for locals and visitors who are already here. This year has been all about rebuilding our organizational capacity and our team. Starting at the top with our board leadership. So we're pleased that we have a strong board composed of a terrific mix of. Skill sets that practices good governance and where Breckenridge residents dominate the composition. And also we brought many of our people here today for you to put some names with faces. So I might, does this come out? Yes. Just so I can look at you. I'll start with Rebecca Campos. Rebecca is leading our patron services team that. Delivers all of the ticketing services, not only for Breck Create Produce Programming, but also. For all of our resident companies and community grantees for facility usage. So Rebecca. Heads up that and services all of our clients in that area. Neil Kerr is our Senior Director of Theaters and Technology overseeing all facilities operations as well as. Our productions itself. He is returning to Breck Create after a hiatus. Was here from 2014 through mid 2017, so knows our venues very well and is already working hard to. Oversee those kind of rental chargeback rates and making sure those are aligned with our. Parallel organizations, municipally owned. Theaters and halls in the county, in the state and beyond. So. Welcome Neil and thank you for being here. He is one of the towns and the, the town staff's key. Connections when it comes to how we can work together to make sure that those facilities are. In the best shape possible. Ken Miller also returns to us. Production extraordinaire. Has been around the community producing large-scale events for. Quite some time now, so we're glad to have Ken back and supporting all of our partners as well as our events. Tor Lindsey is our Marketing Director, getting the word about, out about all of our inspiring activities in the arts community. Susan Lyon has been with us for a long time, Director of Finance and Administration. She really led the charge around one of our key. Successes this year, which was answering the question, how much does it cost to run the facilities, which. Took some time to reimagine our entire accounting system and she really delivered on that. So thank you, Susan. Nicole Batway has successfully launched a fundraising program under the Breck Create brand for the first time. In Breck Creates history. So this is all new to us as an organization and. She has an entrepreneurial spirit that really helped guide the way. Rob Phipps is our Facilities Manager and Lead Preparator. So making sure those bathrooms. Are effectively contracted out to a cleaning service and. Clean for all of our partners' organization or events. But also an incredibly skilled technician in a variety of ways to put together our exhibitions. And all of the work that we do across so many disciplines in the arts. He also has his awesome son Sawyer here. And Ken Miller is here. He's on our board tonight and also one of our major donors, Hans Worster. And one of our instructors as well. So thank you for coming out tonight. We are really going to start with a piece of business first. The Breck Create Board wants to formally recommend that the town accept a generous gift of a memorial bench. To the public art collection in memory of Sue Nelson. Sue Nelson is, was the mother of Todd and Ken Nelson, restaurateurs and philanthropists. Philanthropists in the Breckenridge community. This family has done remarkable things for the arts in. Breckenridge and we are so grateful for everything that they've contributed to that end. I had the pleasure of working with Sue. She was a brilliant. Benefits and Comp Executive at Texas Instruments, an incredible mother, grandmother. And just a true partner of mine, in particular as a volunteer who really. Led the efforts to raise hundreds of thousands of dollars for Breck music during my tenure there. So. It is an honor to present this piece of art. On behalf of the family to the collection and I'll let Avery. Give a little more specifics about the technical aspects of this and location.
Hi, everyone. I'm Avery Glassman. I'm Director of Programs and Special Projects at Breck Create. You can see here some of the details as far as dimensions and weight of the artwork. Go and also the installation requirements. The Nelsens are proposing the Alpine Garden as the best site for this piece. And there is in fact, a sort of. Standard park bench already there in the spot that we are considering that is. In need of its own update and perhaps replacement. So we're proposing that it, that it be replaced with this much. More long-lasting, more durable, more artistic. Yet still comfortable with the two divots for the two seats memorial bench. The installation requirements are pretty minimal. And we, you know, are fully intending and capable of working with. Streets and parks and other necessary municipal departments to coordinate that. We're proposing an installation date of roughly May 1st, 2023. The goal being that it's up with its plaque before Mother's Day 2023. And this was approved by the BCA Board on October 27th. So it would be the bench that you see here by Joshua Gannon, who is an artist out of New Mexico. And a plaque mounted on the sort of rougher edge of the bench on the side there. About 20 inches high, comfortable sitting height, you know, beautiful rough cut granite. So. We'd like to, to turn it over to council for a vote.
All right, all in favor of.
Just one quick question because I think. Is there's, while we think that location will always be there as a garden, what if it's not there? Or we have to repurpose that site for something else? We have the ability to look for an alternative. Location with the family and somewhere else?
We do, yeah. So part of the public art master plan for the Town of Breckenridge is. Assessments like those on a as-needed, case-by-case basis. And we've already discussed with the Nelsens, you know, any future. Relocations or reinstillations would be discussed with them. And a collaboration between Breck Create and the Nelson family. But they, in addition to. Generously donating a piece, they've also agreed for, you know, to continue the funding if things like that arise.
All right, any questions I should ask first? All in favor of accepting this piece of public art? All opposed? Let's have it. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you both.
And Avery. Avery, I forgot to introduce you, but I think you've already been introduced to council before, our extraordinary programming director. So if you have any other questions about some of the public art updates that we're doing, feel free to talk to Avery after the meeting. We have a number of other items in the works from the. Signage on the 10th Mountain Division artwork to a couple of other things that are going on in 2023. So. Here and here we are at, in December and you know, we at Breck Create really. Celebrate the public-private partnership that we have and our role in supporting councils and the community's goals. Our strategy really specifically supports decision-making that's inextricably linked. To how Breck Create can help the town really. Achieve those goals to be a leader in mountain environmental stewardship and sustainable practices. To maintain and celebrate and amplify our hometown feel and friendly atmosphere, but perhaps most. But perhaps most importantly, to ensure our long-term economic viability, irrespective of that climate condition, by amplifying art experiences on a year-round basis. And so this is really our base case programming. I think we skipped a slide, but our base case programming, that design, is what we believe as a team of experts is the best optimal maximum impact for the impact, for the investment that you make in the arts and specifically in Breck Create. This base case set of programs really takes into consideration the constraints that we have around what the marketplace can bear and our seasonality. It's complementary to other arts businesses, from galleries to our resident companies, and it fits the current design of the facilities that we have. Recently, I've been thinking about how to equate what we do on the Arts District Campus to other things that the town invests in. And actually, Breck Create is, and the Arts District Campus in particular, is much like the Rec Center. We have a number of historic properties that are constructed for a specific purpose. And similar to the Rec Center, you can't necessarily host a yoga class in a spin room. So for example, our hot shop is really set up for metal and glasswork. And so these constraints that we have in animating this arts district inform this base case programming. We are not all under one roof like the Rec Center, but do strive to be open for business and visible to, to our community with, with those challenges in mind. So what follows is a couple of metrics. We're going to kind of breeze through these slides. These are metrics that have been used in the past. It does not include the total impact of all of our facility usage partners, which are many, and that is, that has a ripple effect. So what you see here is the economic contribution that Breck Creates specifically makes to our community. One great thing is that one of our successes this year is that we recently reconvened all of the resident companies and arts groups in the community and are looking forward to working closely with one another on a quarterly basis in 2023 and hope that we can together give you a sense of our numbers collectively of what we do to create that vibrancy here in Breckenridge. So, and you can go to the next line. In 2023, one of our goals now that we have baseline stability is to really gain a shared picture of what it means to animate the Arts District Campus, what's realistic and feasible within our constraints, and what metrics we use to measure success so that we can work together on identifying which levers that we can pull and adjust in order to get to that shared goal and vision for the future of the Arts District. Todd has generously agreed to sit on a special purpose task force to help us develop a two-year operating plan that continues to build that stability and looks at the future. So I encourage you to talk to him about, or any of us who are here, about what that success looks like on the campus. How do we measure that success? You know, is it number of hours open for business, or is it more qualitative? Is it the number of events that we host? As you can see, we've had some significant increases coming out of COVID. And this is one way that we look at those numbers, specifically in the Breck Create Presents area with our Performing Arts Series, including Popular Music. We had 15 booked performances, two of which canceled for COVID. But we are very pleased that that series generally breaks even, even with the risk that we have in the marketplace and with COVID. So some great successes, and we want to hear more about what you think success looks like. So I think at this point, I'll turn it back over to Avery, like to come up here even, or use that microphone, whatever's more comfortable for you.
Thank you, Tamara. I'm just going to talk about two priorities that really came to the fold for Breck Create this year and that we'll continue to prioritize in 2023 and beyond. The first is climate consciousness. So I may be preaching to the choir here about the urgency of climate change and its impact on the earth's most vulnerable populations of people. But climate conversations tend to focus on the next technological fix rather than the everyday incremental changes, right, that can be just as impactful as, you know, the next miraculous invention. And as far as the council and community goal of environmental stewardship, BCA approaches this at nearly every level of our programming and every stage of the art-making process. So we just have a few examples here. To start with, we are initiating programs to try and lower our own carbon footprint, primarily with a new program called Precious Plastic that we should be launching the first classes and workshops for in May 2023. We have already collected over 1,200 pounds of plastic that cannot be recycled in Summit County and have begun the process of cleaning, sorting, and shredding it to eventually be used for art-making. Anything from purely aesthetic objects to planters to jewelry will take place in our Precious Plastics studio, and we're very excited about it. It's also been a great community-building opportunity. We've had over 10 collection events throughout the year where citizens drop off their number ones, twos, fives, and sixes in support of, of this program. And also, many, many pounds of plastic sleds from the Town of Breckenridge, broken sleds from Carter Park. So that was pretty cool, too. So that's sort of a very tangible, you know, trying to reuse and reduce our own carbon footprint. But there's also this element of consciousness, right, and about elevating people's awareness of the issue and the urgency of the issue and who it impacts first and most intensely. And we try to do that with all of our programming as well as, you know, including our exhibitions. So, for example, Steve Hilton, an artist who exhibited during Biffa years ago, he's a ceramicist, he stopped firing clay. Too much of a pollution and carbon footprint associated with that form of art-making. So all those little dots or marbles, as he calls them, in the sort of center-right lower image are balls of raw clay. We had, we are the asteroid, really trying to compel people with some thought-provoking messages. We had Once Upon a Time in the Future, which is the unicorn sculpture you see here. It's a zero-waste sculpture. Inside is trash ranging from Summit Daily Newspapers to Pringles cans to Coke bottles, plastic bottles. And that was a piece one of our artists and residents created, right? So it's about bringing people in with the visual impact and then using that draw-in to educate. And, you know, one step further, just in addition to those sort of climate-conscious exhibitions, we also support artists and projects overall that help dismantle the extractive mindset that seems to be so prevalent in our modern society. So whether it's one of our youth-friendly workshops, we had a DIY environmental signs workshop over the summer, nature poems and collage to any of our other programs and artist talks. We are trying to shift that perspective that we so, so often take for granted, right? So that's climate consciousness. And the second is social equity. And I know these words sort of get thrown around a lot, and organizations have different definitions that vary. So I'll just let you know that at the broadest level, Breck Create defines social equity as a just distribution of power. It requires an acknowledgement that we do not all start from the same place, and it involves an ongoing process to adjust social imbalances. So we endeavor to promote equity through the content of our programs, the artists we support, the partners we collaborate with, and the audiences we serve. So for example, again, going back to exhibitions this year, we exhibited work that dealt with a range of social issues, ranging from cultural hybridity of Indigenous Americans' lived experiences to the appropriation and re-appropriation of Dia de los Muertos, to the resource extraction, both literal and figurative of the tourism industry. So we endeavor to support artists and exhibit work that highlights social issues. And then we are also making a concerted effort, and we'll continue to do so next year, to reach far beyond Breckenridge itself and go to other parts of Summit County, and hopefully in the future, Lake and Park County and beyond. So you may have heard of our airstage of frienda that was part of our Dia de los Muertos Festival this year. These are just the numbers of the student participation and community participation we had with that mobile of frienda that was also an art installation that had an interactive component. We also had artists and residents who were very engaged throughout the county, whether Adrian Molina back in January and February, who had workshops at Silverthorn Library and Snowy Peak School, and a number of other places, to Stephanie Mercado, who was here in October, interviewing and photographing and sketching local workers whom she plans to highlight in an exhibition at Old Masonic Hall in fall 2023. She even partnered with Ken Nelson to meet with some of his staff at restaurants around Breckenridge to get their stories as well. So we are endeavoring to reach a diverse population in the county and hopefully tell some stories that people really want to hear and listen to what community members tell us they need. We also had 14 partnerships in 2022 with community partners. So these are nonprofits, schools. Some of them were FERC, as I mentioned, the Silverthorn Library, Mountain Dreamers, Summit Middle School. We have an after-school art program going on right there right now. Frisco Elementary, the Town of Silverthorn. I won't list them all, but these are people beyond the core Breck Create team, beyond the core Breck Create patronage or constituents who are also benefiting from the work we do, and we're benefiting from the collaborations with them as well. So those are our priorities for 2023, and I'll let Tamara take it away again.
So like I mentioned, we did kickoff fundraising effort, a individual and contributed revenue program in 2022 with a very generous matching challenge from members of our board and a major donor in our community. I'm pleased to say we're almost there. We're going to get there before the end of the year. And we are also had the exciting news that we had 337 new donors to Breck Create. That, don't get too excited, the town isn't quite off the hook yet. That totals only $37,000. So we have a long way to go. But what this indicates to us, or what it means to us, is that there's great potential there to grow and cultivate this, this community who are inspired by our work and who would like to invest in it in ways that the town already has. So thank you to all of our donors, especially those who came with us from Breck Music and through the uncertainty and are, continue to be involved and invested in our organization. And lastly, I think we just wanted to share again, this was part of the budget packet, that we continue to work toward balancing and delivering a diverse mix of revenue, one that's healthy and sustainable. So you can see the town's investment as a percentage and how it is trending downward toward that goal, as compared to our overall costs. So lastly, you know, our job is ultimately to inspire people in all of the ways that we've mentioned tonight through the arts and make that a vital part of our healthy and well-rounded place to live and visit. So we will leave you with a video. Any questions we can answer for you?
I just want to say that I feel so amazed about where you guys are today versus two years ago. I mean, I feel really, really hurt. When we first started talking, we were talking about, you know, how do we get people up to the Arts District? How do we get art to align with the town's goals, climate, sustainability? How do we get? You know, how do we bring equity and how do we give voice and give space to people who aren't currently, you know, on our stages? And I feel like you guys have just done an incredible job bringing that to the forefront. And I also want to acknowledge the school-based stuff that you guys have done is really, really cool, branching out into other areas of our community, and then also the block parties. I think you guys have so much to celebrate. You know, I know that you're still growing and there's still a lot of changes, but I mean, what you've done in the last year, year and a half is really incredible.
Thank you, Kelly.
Are you still planning a rebranding or a branding refresh of sorts?
Yes, that is something to look forward to in early 2023. So we will launch our new website and the brand refresh in February, and we'll have some specific communications and share a little bit more about that in the coming months. But it's got a pretty robust calendar function. We have quite a bit of users hitting our website, so we want to make it as easy as possible to navigate, specifically for those who aren't familiar with some of our resident companies and who want something to do other than maybe ski or mountain bike or what have you. So we're excited about the ease of the, the user experience on that, and can't wait to share it.
That's great. I appreciate that you recognize that, you know, events are being purchased and sought after, you know, virtually more than even, you know, in person. So it's great. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Alrighty, we have some continued business this evening. We have a second reading. Council Bill Number 37, Series 2022. This is a bill for an ordinance establishing a regulatory fee connection with commercial materials management program. Matt Halsey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Matt Halsey, Assistant Director of Public Works, overseeing sustainability, mobility, and parking. Before you this evening is a material management fee ordinance establishing a fee schedule and criteria to recover administrative, operational, and maintenance costs of the shared commercial enclosure program. The ordinance before you has no changes from first reading. Additionally, staff has sent communication informing users in the program of, of the fee, and the same communication is also posted on our website. It's staff's recommendation that council adopt the ordinance on second reading this evening. With that, I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, just, are we conveying specifically like the, the costs that the town incurs for these structures and trying to kind of make a convincing case of why, you know, up to now it's been funded by the taxpayers? And so that it's not a money-making project for the town, it's more maybe to defray some of the costs, be letting the, the people that are getting saddled with these bills know the motivation and their rationale?
Yes, I believe that we've answered most of those questions. The Restaurant Association meeting, they relayed kind of the, the background on what this is. This isn't obvious that we're just trying to make money on it. It's something we're trying to recover, the costs that we're already burdened with.
You know, I mean, and certainly the Restaurant Association is such a great mechanism for, to meet, you know, to, to get all that out. But are we talking to some of the retail folks as well?
Yes, retail and then property owners and people that would be involved. So we believe we've We believe we've reached out to the people that should be included.
Any other questions? Anyone in the public wish to speak on this second reading? Closed, is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass council bill number thirty seven, series twenty twenty two, title which has been read into the record.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Ms. Sade. Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
With the second reading of council bill number thirty eight, series twenty twenty two, this is an ordinance amending chapter thirteen. Pertaining to the process for Breckenridge special events, Breckenridge Events Committee.
Mayor, Council, this is an ordinance on second reading that is just more permanently establishing the process of special events permitting and the composition and role of the special events, Breckenridge Events Committee in the municipal code.
Any questions for staff?
There's a lot of housekeeping, isn't it?
You, buddy. All housekeeping. No questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? With that, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Second reading, I move we pass council bill number thirty eight, series twenty twenty two, the title which has been read into the record.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? On the matter? Roll call.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman. Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
We have the first reading of council bill number thirty nine, series twenty twenty two. So bill for an ordinance amending policy five A and policy five R pertaining to architectural compatibility, making conforming amendments.
Mayor and Council, Sarah Crump, planner two for the record, this amendment would be to the development code policies five A and five R. The absolute and relative policies of architectural compatibility and it would disallow the use of brick, metal or stucco above seventy five percent on any facade, excepting the use for buildings with institutional uses. And then it would also make changes to the relative policy, including the new materials matrix for exterior building materials and assigned specific points for those materials. Community Development recommends that you pass this tonight on first reading and I'm available for questions if you have any. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on the first reading of council bill thirty nine? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On the second reading. Or is it first reading? Second reading?
First reading.
That's what I thought. On first reading, I move we pass council bill number thirty nine, series twenty twenty two, the title which has been read into the record. My screen went blank. That's what happened.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion about Jeffrey's screen going?
Do we have any IT people here? What? Oh, thank you. Never mind, I got it.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Owens.
Yeah.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mr. Bergeron. Mr. Beckerman. Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
Reading of council bill number forty, series twenty twenty two. It's bill for an ordinance conforming. Policy twenty four absolute to the workforce housing division administrative rules and regulations.
It's good evening. For the record, Lori Best, manager of the Town of Breck Housing Program. This is a first reading of an ordinance that if approved will modify policy twenty four in the development code. It will strike out some language regarding the deed restrictions that are required for the employee generation policy. That language regarding the deed restrictions is more appropriate in our housing rules and regulations than it already exists in the housing rules and regulations. So we are recommending approval on first reading and we'll schedule this for second reading.
Lori, thank you. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass council bill number forty, series twenty twenty two. The title which was in will be read into the record with the understanding that the second meeting will be twenty three. This is the last twenty two.
Oh, yeah.
Make.
But it, yes.
Well, you got some resolutions.
There's a motion, second. Any further discussion?
Well, we have New Year's Eve come, New Year's coming up, so it's going to change to twenty three.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
We have resolution number twenty three, series twenty twenty two. This is a resolution making supplemental and reduced appropriations to the twenty twenty two budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Dave Byrd, Director of Finance for the Record. I'm here to submit the appropriation, supplemental appropriations for the twenty twenty two town budget. For funds that we believe are going to exceed the twenty two budget based upon projections for the year. The total is seven million, six hundred eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty three dollars that we're looking at recommending for approval tonight for the budget.
Dave, thank you. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass resolution number twenty three, series twenty twenty two, a resolution creating a supplemental and reduce appropriations to the twenty twenty two budget.
Second, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
We have resolution number twenty four, series twenty twenty two. This is a resolution creating a temporary advisory commission known as the Town of Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission.
Mayor and Council, we have presented to you a resolution that updates previous resolutions that created the Social Equity Advisory Commission. To use Jeffrey's language, this is essentially cleanup, working with the town attorney. We have simplified the language that's included in the resolution. This includes removing provisions to have multiple council members on the commission. Removes the description of staggered terms since we did that at the onset of the commission. And we don't need that language in there any longer. It removes language specific to filling the council member position as the mayor fills those positions. Removes unnecessary language defining a vacancy and moves details that are specific to how the commission operates in their meetings to their bylaws. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion, Jeffrey?
I move a few past resolution number twenty four, series twenty twenty two. Resolution creating a temporary advisory commission known as the Town of Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
That was a lot of cleanup on that.
Roll call.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
All right, we have the reappointment of Tajah Greer, the Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission.
As we talked about in the work session, Tajah is currently the commission chair. She's a very valuable asset to the commission. Her letter asking to be reappointed was included in the packet. Staff is recommending that we reappoint Tajah for a three year term and the language for the motion is at the base of the memo.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions? Anyone in the public wish to talk about Tajah? No. Is there a motion?
I move that we affirm that staff's recommendation to reappoint Tajah, Tajah Greer to the Breckenridge Social Equity Advisory Commission for a term of three years beginning in December twenty twenty two. Second.
And motion and a second. Roll call.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Mr. Rank. Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
Planning Commission decisions for December sixth, twenty twenty two. Fortunately, they made no decisions.
It still wasn't.
So we're going to start with a clean slate in twenty twenty three. So planning commission non decisions stand. Report to town manager and staff. Anything to add? No, all right. Let's see. Report to the mayor and council members. We did have an MMC meeting. We had a sort of uncomfortable talk about pay as you throw. We did have some discussions about just the county's recycling plan in general and. Sort of range, you know, when the MMC gets together, there's a lot of ranging discussions. And then we also talked about. What I brought to you at the last meeting with Excel and the difference between them putting a. A new pipe to run, run gas to the community because it'll be for the whole county. Or can we figure out a way to limit the amount of gas that the county needs? It's a seventy five, seventy five million. Is that what she said? It's some insane amount of money and why you think, oh, that'd be great if Excel just pays that. That goes on the back of the user, so. It's a buried asset. At some point that won't be used and people will still be paying for it long after. That thing is no longer useful. So I'm not sure where we're going for there from there, but everybody in the room is a little aghast at sort of. Why are we at this point right now?
How how quickly does that need to happen, Eric?
You know, I mean. They acted like it's happening pretty soon and. The PUC, it does not seem like they're in favor of this buried asset thing. Like, this is really not good for the the users. What they would need is they would need testimony from the towns to make it happen.
There was some discussion on whether we would be supportive of commissioning our own study. Summit County, all of the agencies to really, so we're not just listening to Excel tell us what they think they need. You know, but.
And everybody seemed like.
Would be, but.
And, you know, it's typical. Everybody was sort of like, why don't they pay, you know, why do we have to pay for it? Because everybody's going to have to pay for this pipeline. That's the problem. And it's odd because it's really, it's. There's, in the summer, there is no gas deficit. It's just in the winter and generally when it's super cold. So it's a ton of money. It's a ton of money to saddle. All the users with. Whatever that period of time will be, be great if we could figure out a different solution to this. So we did talk about that for a little bit and.
There's a lot of it.
A lot of it. I know this is sort of above all of our pay grades. This is a really, this is one of those decisions. It's pretty difficult.
Is there an appetite to commission our own study?
I think so.
I think it was.
Appetites talk about it at least.
Yeah. We kind of want to, let's see what the next step is and what happens. Everybody had been reached out to yet.
Yeah. I mean, that, you know, the sort of the nuclear option is to not allow any. More gas development in the community, but it couldn't just be Breck.
Yeah.
It'd have to be the whole county.
Well.
Everybody.
Might be Breck and Frisco and that might be it.
But that won't, that wouldn't do it. Unfortunately, they would still have to bump up the amount of gas they can deliver. So.
We'd have to, we'd have to cover existing.
So. Open space.
Had a meeting last night.
What'd you have for dinner at the meeting?
Fried chicken.
Did the boss show up?
Yeah, you know, I think he, I think he wanted to oversee the workings of BOSAC and he was concerned. The will of all and also the team spirit and and yeah, he came and enjoyed a little bit of fried chicken and then get the hell out of there. Yeah, it was pretty good. We did the field report, year in review type thing, which is pretty interesting. And we've done, you know, BOSAC and staff have done an, you know, an amazing job this year, you know, I know the. You kind of get overshadowed by the master plan of all that energy that took. But they've done the the trail crew. They've done some amazing stuff and a lot of that under pretty hardship because of the runoff, all the rain we've gotten. It just washed out a lot of the trails, but the trails crew kind of really stood up. And I hopefully the county, part of that is Berlin Blas, which we get it, we get a kind of look at. Then we had a. What county has to look at. Then we had a trivia contest. Nikki, Nikki came up with some questions and. And it was the honor system, so I did very well. Yeah, I think I won. That's so that was good. So, yeah. Yeah, that was BOSAC. And then of course, we, we had walnuts today and then cake and so pretty much it's been a long day of government. So you'll forgive me if I'm a little bit scattered.
You're in your bag.
Totally, you're in your bag, yeah.
Tourism.
Uh, no meeting.
History.
No meeting.
Creative arts. Do you want to talk some more?
Strategy meeting on Thursday and you have some ideas and input if you've got any before then. Thank you.
Is that for that thing that she said you're on?
Yeah. Yeah.
We suckered you into.
Notice he's spending a lot of money since last April. You know, just finding out. I wonder what's different.
Events.
Nothing to add.
Yeah. Childcare.
No meeting.
This is awesome. Workforce housing.
We had a meeting this morning and we spent most of the time. Talking about you. We spent most of the time talking about Stilson and. Yeah, and we talked about.
Any surprises at least. Everybody knows where everybody's.
I couldn't resist, sorry. Now, we we've talked about pretty much everything already during work session that we were really focused on. We we went over the. The report card and housing helps and housing help, interestingly, housing helps is taking off again now, which is cool. You know, because before it was weighted heavily again towards buy downs and and housing helps it kind of plateaued, it seemed. But now all of a sudden, and maybe that's interest rates, right? Now, all of a sudden, housing helps is taking off and. So we've got a ton of applications in right now. So I thought that was cool.
Would you guys talk at all about, you know, what I had brought up a couple of weeks ago about the doing a little study about interest rates and how that, how that affects? No? All right. I'd like to get to that sooner than later. I don't think it has to be a deep dive analysis.
Effects what, like monthly payment or beyond that?
No.
Yeah. Buying power.
What affects, yeah, how it affects. How it affects resale, how it affects, you know, what what we're saddling somebody with. You know, what what's the difference between somebody that's eighty percent AMI buying a house three years ago and today? What's that extra that they're paying? You know, that that's the kind of, so what's that doing to the? What you can sell for? I I think we need a bigger analysis because the rate's going to go up one more time at least, so.
Well, as we get into more of these for sale products, absolutely. Yeah. No, that's great. Great point, Eric.
Just to piggyback on what you said, good success with the buy down program. I think we sold close to eight million dollars in in properties this past year. Couple under contract for twenty twenty three. There's, I think, five active listings, so staff is continuing to work on. Kind of refreshing that money and getting it back in the program. They're crushing, so.
Awesome. And.
That's really strong. This theme is really.
Good crew. Uh, social equity.
We have a meeting on Monday.
Excellent. Other matters?
I got a couple.
Yeah.
One, I I do think that citizen comment. Hank, whatever, made sense. I think if you have one lockup apartment and you live in the top floor with, you know, four bedrooms for long term. That you don't, I don't, I think it's kind of unfair to get to pay for five rooms if you rent out one, one basement apartment. So I'd like to talk about that. You know, I'm sure there's stuff that I haven't considered, but that's something that I do think we could, we could look at after the end of the year. Second thing. I heard from. Some people that there is a fear that's to circumnavigate the kind of the the STR fees and and all that and licensing that some people are kind of, under the tax, the taxes. Some people are kind of reaching out to past clients and saying, hey, if you want to come back. Deal directly with me, thus avoiding the. And I don't know if there's any way to monitor that. I don't know if there's any algorithm to to kind of oversee that, but that's what. Someone that rented a place told me that happened.
I think that's happened for years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Saying that, so they're under reporting their taxes?
Yeah, so another, yeah.
Yeah. Could be happening, yeah. I think they're also skirting the booking fees that way, too.
Yeah, yeah. But they still have to have a license, so. Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it's not the license. It's it's the taxes. So I mean, that's against the law, so hopefully they're not doing that. Yeah.
No, I mean, one of the, you know, we have a new, one of the positions that was approved in the budget for twenty three is a. Sales tax auditor.
Yeah.
So I don't know if those are types of things they can look at to see. So I don't know if those are types of things they can look at to see, but.
Well, I mean, I think a lot of it could just be a neighbor knocking out, you know what I mean? If you like that, kind of get attention, pay attention.
There are a lot of businesses probably play around a little bit with.
Way that Dick and I always make sure that we play it all like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's totally different today because everyone's credit card. You can't get away with anything.
We're going out there paying us in ruble.
Other matters?
Todd. Um, with our contribution to Breck Film for the Eclipse Theater this past year, um, yeah, I think I'd love kind of an update from Breck Film or just if if the rest of of the council was up for it, kind of a, yeah, health of that and how we're doing and kind of what the future is of the eclipse.
Would like that, too.
I think there's
You know, we had one fairly recently because he was, remember, talking to us a little bit about some of the challenges that they had, and we've sent, so maybe in the sometime during that first quarter, we'll try to get him in here.
I was hearing some stuff kind of just out and about in town, and I think it'd be worth an update here sooner rather than later, just whenever it works for you.
I did get a menu board for it from them, though. I have it right in the front. I had to change it a little bit. I had to ask them for a calendar and what's playing instead of just the QR code, but I think it yeah. And then Billy Hope had a great event at the Eclipse the other day.
Yeah, I heard that.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Five very cool films, some good speakers. They didn't talk too much, and then they did some schwag giveaway. It was honestly, it was one of the, one of the better events I've been to. It didn't go too long. It was really well done. Yeah, they did. They did a great job, so it was very cool. The films were real awesome. Cool, yeah. So hopefully they can get it together. Just starting to get some good films in now. I bet Avatar will do well. This thing they did this last weekend, they did the menu and Banshees of Inisheran at four and seven fifteen, and then they swapped them for the next night. So I think they're starting to get creative about how they're doing some stuff.
Yeah, we want to see that succeed.
Yeah.
I have one.
Yes.
HC3 said that they have money to put some more composting dumpsters around if the towns will partner on the site. And I would really think that a southern end site, like maybe the ice rink, would get some traction because that, you know, the other two are so far away from that.
Yeah, we could bet, we could bet that internally.
I agree.
See?
Instead of Third sheet of ice.
How many would we want?
What?
Should we want more than?
Yeah. They said, they said suggest any locations you think you'd like, and then I think they'd.
Let us, let staff talk about it.
It's really low tech. It's just a big bowl of garbage.
Yeah. It locks, but apparently it locks because of the bears.
Yeah.
You want us to just coordinate with HC3?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
Eric, two second one, just a shout out to Jody and her team over at Belle Resorts or rescue resort. I think they they're really kind of doing what they said of putting the community and their employees first above everything else at the moment, you know, opening a couple of days early, getting uphill access open on eight and nine pretty quickly, opening new terrain, and just everything I've been hearing has been super positive. I just think their relationship with the town and should just, all that should be recognized as, just a quick shout out, so that's all I got.
Carolyn, any?
Since I've been on council, we haven't done a state of the town, and I feel like as
She could do it, and Giulio, is that who she is? Okay, you want to do it?
I don't know. What didn't typically do? But I
Remember.
We always try to do it. We tried to do it in that first quarter is, you know, that's typically with the state.
So beat up after the STRs, that was the last thing on my mind, but, you know, maybe we could do it.
You can even sub that with having, I know Brooke does a great job after every council meeting, but that's a lot of info. Maybe some like annual high level newsletter.
I mean, I wouldn't mind doing another one, maybe, you know, maybe in April, maybe at the end of the season or something, or I don't know. It's a good idea, though.
Yeah.
We're going to get, we'll get back on topic to talk to next month.
Well, we'll work on it if that's what everybody wants to put one together where we do a community thing and try to get people in here.
Nobody's super excited about it.
That's really what everyone wants.
Nobody wore one, Aaron suggested also. But if we do, we definitely need a dress code, you know.
What we try to do is we try to get it, we try to highlight, you know, what what are the, what are the topics that we're talking about? What are we working on? What's some key accomplishments? What what are we looking at going forward? Remember, you guys kind of divided up different topics as you said up here, and we tried to push it out and get people to show up for it. And we've had some success. I don't know, you know, still if people want to fill, I don't know if people still want to fill an auditorium in that kind of setting, or if we wanted to try to do something more virtual even or combination.
We could definitely do a night coffee talk, too, something less formal. If you want to do something like that, maybe we could do something in
That might be a good idea. Just people have different schedules.
You know, we did that one, you know, we've done a couple of happy hours, but maybe we do a night, maybe you know, we do it somewhere.
We'll do it tonight or something somewhere, you know, or you get some food to get younger people in, you know.
That'd be cool. Maybe something like that, so it's not as formulaic.
But I liked it just as, that was the only council meeting I'd ever go to because it was nice to have that high level oversight.
You were never a part of one?
No.
I have been.
She doesn't know the pain.
You have, right?
That's what
For like three years.
Is it just you and Eric are the only two? Dick, were you ever on?
Yeah.
Dick was here before me, so.
Jeff was here for a while. Think about, I think I'd rather just do a, do a night coffee talk somewhere, maybe a cocktail hour with the council.
We'll get an evening coffee talk.
Yeah. We'll call, we call cocktails with the council.
Yeah.
I like that. I can hold the martini glass while I'm talking. Better than a coffee cup. I have one thing. Now we've given out our third leadership award. Start thinking about who's next. I would like to do these every three months. That was the original plan before things went askew, you know? Or or two a year. I know, whatever, whatever you guys think, but I think they're great. I think they're great to
That was great.
We have a ton of people that we really should
Hundred percent agree.
Recognize in this community, so so think about who you'd like to have next. And with that, anything else? Have a happy holidays, everybody. If I don't see you. Was it great twenty twenty-two? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it was pretty good, wasn't it? A good twenty twenty-two, Jeffrey.
Was that
Mixed?
From the glass.